Adrian N. Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, April 21st, 2025, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for April 21st, 2025. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream, and post it on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts, and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Resnick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Sprank.
Here.
Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
Thank you, and City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our presentation that was scheduled for this evening will be rescheduled for a future meeting, so we will move on to Proclamations. Our first proclamation is Community Development Week.
Okay, and I see that Tracy Morrison is here to accept this proclamation, so if you want to come up and say a few words, and then I'll read this for us.
I'm challenged vertically. Hi, everyone, my name is Tracy Morrison. I'm the Executive Director of Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Dubuque. Thank you for allowing me to be here, Mayor, members of the City Council. I have with me Brooklyn Williams. Brooklyn is a resident of Ecumenical Tower. And I'm here to talk about CDBG funding tonight. Catholic Charities was so honored to be awarded a CDBG fund, and with that money, $380,000, very substantial award, we were able to modernize and upgrade our two elevators. And I'm sure being so close to Ecumenical Tower, most of you know that we're your neighbors right across the street here from South Locust. And for those of you who may not be familiar, Ecumenical Tower is an affordable housing community for limited-income seniors, adults with disabilities, and limited-income families. And keep it in mind that not all disabilities are visible ones. So, the two elevators are an absolute lifeline for our residents. Many of them are in wheelchairs or walk with assisted devices. It's also, the elevators are also critical for their visitors, family and friends who may come over, as well as community service providers. On any given week at Ecumenical Tower, there are approximately 250 community service providers that come through our doors. People like the Visiting Nurses Association, people who help with senior meal delivery, medication management, things like that. So leveraging the CDBG dollars really allowed our organization to take on this necessary capital improvement project, making our building safe for not only our residents but for our community members as well. In closing, I just wanted to share an important but simple principle about property management is self-sustainability, meaning that the rents, the income that we bring in, has to be able to support our expenses, including expensive capital improvements like new elevator and roofs and windows and things like that. And that makes major improvements really difficult without putting additional debt on the property. An additional debt means our rent has to increase. So through this grant, you helped us keep our rents affordable. So individuals like Brooklyn, and there's two other residents I'd like to acknowledge here tonight, Cece Acosta and Joy Ryder. Can I just wave? Your money helped keep us safe and keep all of them in their homes, so I just want to thank you for keeping the CDBG program alive, and please know that it's working every single day in our community to improve lives. Thank you.
May I add one little bit?
If you're quick, I think so.
Yes. One thing I'd like to add is Ms. Tracy and Ms. Leslie are so amazing in keeping us safe and saying that we're feeling good, everything's going good. They're like two very social mommas for everyone in that building. So I'd say something to help them both shine.
Not necessary, but thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you both. Brooklyn, Cece, Joy, thank you very much for being here. We enjoy having you as neighbors, and we see you often, so thank you very much for speaking up as often as you do. It is wonderful to have your voice in the mix. And Tracy and everyone in your team, thank you so much for the work that you do. And thanks for that message about community development block grant funding. It's really important, especially right now. The types of things that you're talking about are things that don't get done without that partnership from our federal government and state governments and local governments working together. So thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the week of April 21st through 25th, 2025, has been designated as National Community Development Week to celebrate the community development block grant, the CDBG program. Whereas the CDBG program provides annual funding and flexibility to local communities to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing, and suitable living environment, and economic opportunities to low- and moderate-income residents. And whereas, over the past four years, our community has received a total of $4,219,852 in CDBG funds. And whereas, the following activities have been funded: First-time homebuyer program, homeowner rehabilitation program, rental unit rehabilitation, lead and healthy homes match funding, short-term rental, mortgage, and utility assistance, park redevelopment, including Comiskey Park and the Lincoln Outdoor Wellness Project, micro-enterprise assistance program, infrastructure improvements, childcare development, housing capital improvement projects, neighborhood recreation programs, homeless shelter rehabilitation, zoning enforcement, and vacant building enforcement. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of April 21st through the 25th, 2025, as Community Development Week. Tracy, you can come on up. Thank you, Brooklyn. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Come on up. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here.
Our second proclamation is Arbor Day.
All right, I believe Tom Kramer and maybe a few other people are here to accept this proclamation, if I understand correctly.
As many of you know, my name is Tom Kramer, and I'm the President of Dubuque Trees Forever. Along with me tonight are some other board members: Steve Pregler, Jenna Hertz from the Arboretum, Cheryl Sheldon, Lorena Snyder, and Robert Wegman, the current City Forester. And everybody knows our fearless leader, Laura Russell. Okay, just a little bit of background, we've talked about before, Trees Forever was formed in 2017 by our Executive Director, Laura. She surrounded herself with tree people at the time. Steve Pregler, who just recently retired, was the City Forester. I was the current City Forester. And Barb Liska was a forestry technician, and she came aboard also to get this whole thing started. From here, we added some certified arborists, master gardeners, and others that just had an interest in trees. Our board meets quarterly to plan the next tree planting event. In our nine years of existence, we have planted over 650 trees. As you know, 1,300 trees, ash trees, were removed, so we've replanted almost half of the trees that we lost due to emerlasspor in the nine years. We plant trees mainly on city properties and city rightways. We have logged over 3,300 volunteer hours. They are the ones that should be getting all the credit, because they're the ones that really make this go. We push the buttons, volunteers make it go. We do, besides planting the trees, we do after-tree care, orchard care, education, and advocacy. We hope to revisit the trees from the time we plant them for the next two years to make sure that these trees get off on a good start, so they're just not neglected, put them in the ground, and everybody forgets about them. So we hope to revisit them every two years to make sure they're staked properly, if the stakes need to be removed, trim a few branches. We had some trees that really had a big girl spurt, some of the elm trees we planted, so we need to cut some branches off of that, so the tree gets trained properly and gets a good central leader. Okay, now, in order to main this tree, in order to maintain the Tree City USA certification, we have to have an Arbor Day event. So we started the Arbor Day event. At this time, I would like to invite you, the City Council, to come to the Arboretum next Saturday, April 26th, from 12:00 to 2:00. That's where we're going to have our celebration, at the Packard Pavilion. We are going to plant trees in the morning at 8:30, right? 8:30, we're going to start planting trees. So the tree planting will be done, but at noon, we're going to have the Arbor Day celebration. We're going to have free trolley rides from City Hall. They will leave at 11:00 and 11:30, and they will return at 2:00, when this project's over. Okay, many family activities are planned, such as tree ID walks, we got a coloring contest, tree-themed storytime, and free tree seedlings for the kids. We hope to see many there. Again, that's this Saturday, April 26th, at the Dubuque Arboretum in the Packard Pavilion, from noon to 2:00 PM. Thank you for having us tonight.
Well, thank you all for coming, first of all. You know, I was thinking about you today, actually, and I think you're going to like this. I was in my yard picking up sticks, and just, also, I had to lay mulch last week, so I was laying mulch. And I remembered, from learning from Laura when I was volunteering a couple of years ago, the appropriate way to do that around trees, and I remembered you doing that with lots of people who come and see the tree planting and learn about tree planting. You get to understand a little bit more about how to keep trees healthy. But then, you know, normally when we're in our yard picking up sticks, we're not thinking happy thoughts. It's usually kind of a tiring activity. But in this case, I thought about you, because I'm so glad to have a group of people like you who are in our community, really advocating for this issue. I didn't realize it was 650 trees. That was just 650 trees? That's amazing. That is just amazing. And you're not done. You're not even close to done. So thank you very much for all the work that you do, and thank you for events like the one coming up this weekend. We really appreciate everything that you're doing.
And that number should grow drastically with the grant that we received, that we have to plant trees in the next five years.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that continues on.
Yes.
How many did we do? How many did we do last weekend?
18.
200?
Well, yeah, so we planted, volunteers planted 18 trees for local homeowners, and then we are giving away about 175.
Excellent.
This spring, and hopes to triple that in the fall. So if people can get signed up, that'd be great.
That's great. Well, thank you. Thank you for all the work that you're doing, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Dubuque Trees Forever is planning an Arbor Day celebration in partnership with the Dubuque Arboretum and Botanical Gardens on Saturday, April 26th. The public is invited to attend from noon to 2:30 at the Arboretum. Activities will include tree ID walks, a coloring contest, a tree-themed storytime with celebrity readers, Girl Scout tree promise activities, and more. Free trolley rides will be available from downtown to the Arboretum that afternoon. A tree planting will be held in the morning. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council, staff, and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 25th day of April, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and urge residents to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
You can try, but Laura's not going to let you out of this one. Yeah.
Let's hope Rick can work that thing. All right, thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here.
We'll move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input, and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration, and consent items can be found on pages 2 through 4 of the agenda.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Hey, Eric, could you hit the switch, please, so we're not on the screen anymore? Thank you very much. Do we have anyone here in chambers who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No input.
Thank you, Adrian. Thanks, Cory. All right, so if no one asks to remove, back to the table, then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended.
Second by Farber.
Going to motion, my Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Next, our items set for public hearing, we have four. First is 2025 repair and maintenance of the Iowa Street Parking Garage. Initiate public bidding process and setting date for a public hearing for May 5th, 2025. Second is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement with Fitzgerald Enterprises LLC for May 5th, 2025. Third is proceedings to set public hearing on June 2nd, 2025, for the issuance of not to exceed $761,000 stormwater revenue loan and disbursement agreement sponsorship project amendment 2024 Green Alley Project for June 2nd, 2025. And fourth is proceedings to set public hearing on June 2nd, 2025, for the issuance of not to exceed $1,600,000 stormwater revenue capital loan notes state revolving loan fund program B Branch Gate and Pump Project for June 2nd, 2025.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Wethel.
Going to motion, Ms. Russell, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Next, our boards and commissions. We have mayoral selection of appointment to the Civil Service Commission and appointment to the Zoning Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so we will go with the mayoral selection for the appointment of the Civil Service Commission first, and I intend to appoint Michael Jackson to the Civil Service Commission, so I will ask the council to consider that, and I understand that we'll be considering that again on June 2nd, correct? Okay. All right. Moving on then to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, we have one five-year term through March 25th, 2030, and we have one applicant, Keith Alvin. I'll entertain a motion, please. Mr. Jones.
I move that Keith Alvin be reappointed to a new five-year term through March 25th, 2030.
Second. Going to motion by Jones, second by Resnick. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes 7-0.
Next, our public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to, and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is Plan Unit Development Amendment, 3125 Pennsylvania Avenue.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Jones.
I move to receive and file the communications, and further move that a requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings, part of the meeting, which is to be finally passed, to be suspended.
Second by Farber.
I'm going to motion, my Jones, second by Farber. And we're going to have Wally do a presentation first, and then I'll open it for public hearing. And when you're ready, you can line up over here, and we can just kind of go through whoever has comments, we can take those. Thank you very much. All right, Wally.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Wally Warrenmont, Planning Services Director. The request before you tonight is a Plan Unit Development Amendment for 3125 Pennsylvania Avenue, commonly referred to as Applewood 1 Senior Apartments. The request is to amend that plan unit development by updating the conceptual development plan, the parking requirements, and changing that age restriction from being 55 or older seniors to opening up to all ages for multifamily use. The location here on our vicinity map, as you can see here, it's on Pennsylvania Avenue. There are four apartments that are all titled Applewood Senior Apartments. In this case, we're just looking at 3125. There is a plan unit development that was established in 1993 that encompassed 3125 and 3175, and this will be an amendment to that PUD. We'll talk about that a little bit more here. This is the notification map. We do notify all property owners within 200 feet of the area to be amended, in this case, for rezoning. So a little bit about the project site, like I mentioned, in 1993, this was a rezone from our one single-family residential to a plan unit development in order to accommodate some senior housing facility. At that time, they were taking advantage of some historic, affordable housing tax credits, commonly referred to as Section 42. You'll see some of the information that's included in the packet and in the site letter. During that rezoning, they approved the request. A joint properties here, to the north off Carter Road, we have a single-family residential subdivision. To the right is located a large single-family home. To the south, we have residential homes on Pennsylvania Avenue, and to the west, once again, it's a continuation of these senior apartments. The total site question is about 2.5 acres, composed of those two lots that I mentioned. In this case, the plan unit development is really only going to impact the property at 3125 Pennsylvania Avenue only. So that is an existing apartment building that has 47 units, and if approved, it will still have 47 units, it just will now be age-restricted just to senior housing. The property owner who is here might speak a little bit, is looking at converting that from age restriction to all opportunities for individuals to be able to live at that location. It's a three-story building. There is some parking associated with it, and the parking requirements for multifamily development is 1.5 parking spaces for each unit. Senior housing, it's 0.5. The property owner is in the process of submitted a site plan, convert that to one and a half parking spaces. So based on the site plan that's been submitted, they would actually exceed that parking requirement slightly, it'd be like 1.54 for that, so they'll be bringing the property in compliance if it is approved to be converted to non-age-restricted housing for multifamily. This is that layout of that parking lot. They're going to be eliminating a park or drive aisle to the south, expand the parking in order to accommodate those additional cars. That may or may not be necessary. So once again, it's unage-restricted, so seniors 55 and older can still live at the location, it just won't be specifically restricted for that age. Once again, not a lot of impact on utilities, because they're existing, nothing's really changing there. Public services, environment, traffic patterns will increase a little bit. There is a little bit higher traffic volume when it comes to multifamily versus senior housing requirements. It is located on Pennsylvania Avenue, which is a minor arterial, and it is a very heavily-traveled street, so staff does not perceive any issues with increased traffic on Pennsylvania Avenue. And then you see our comprehensive plan recommendations, where we talk about integrating multifamily development in areas, encouraging mixed housing affordable for all segments of our population, then also encourage new multifamily residential development in proximity to our jobs. So at the public hearing, there was several individuals that spoke in opposition to the request. We did receive some letters from the joint property owner, which is shaded in purple here, Mr. Burns, and those speakers at the meeting voiced concerns about changing of the age restriction to multifamily, concerns about outdoor recreational areas, increased traffic, and if there be a potential for a domino effect where all the additional senior housing units will be converted to multifamily residential on age-restricted. This map, staff actually identified all the areas that we received written in opposition. Those are highlighted in the red. Once again, the purple is a written letter from Mr. Burns, and the individuals that are shaded in orange, we received opposition. They are not the property owner, they're a tenant of the property. So based on that, because we have more than 20% of the land within 200 feet of the property is in opposition, that would force a supermajority vote at City Council in order to approve the rezoning. So by a vote of five to one, the Zoning Advisory Commission recommends that the City Council approve the request. A petition of opposition, like I mentioned before, requires a supermajority vote at this time. That's all I have, unless you guys have any questions.
All right, thank you, Wally. We are in a public hearing to consider a request from James B. Gantz, Solder Rock Housing Cooperative, to amend the plan unit development located at 3125 Pennsylvania Avenue by updating the conceptual development plan, amending the parking requirements, and adding multifamily residential as a principal permitted use. Now we can accept some public input, so if you would like to provide any input, feel free to come on up to the podium at this time.
Mr. Gantz, want to talk first?
It's up to you all.
Jim Gantz, 12241 Forest Meadow Drive, Dubuque. So the property is owned by myself, it's owned by Solder Rock Housing Co-op, which is myself and two brothers. We purchased the property 15 years ago from Dubuque Bank and Trust. Dubuque Bank and Trust actually developed the senior properties, both Applewood 1 and Applewood 2, 30 years ago, through Section 42 housing. So it was designed to be a senior property for, with income and rent restrictions. So it was, you know, that was the model that they went to the Iowa Finance Authority with to provide, you know, housing for seniors at a reduced rent and a lower income level that restricted the property for 30 years. There's two 15-year periods, initial period, that was during the ownership of Dubuque Bank and Trust. They bought it as a community investment project 15 years, or, well, basically 30 years ago, kept it for 15 years. There's, during the first 15 years, the credits can be, you know, clawed back if there's a violation of the land use restriction. Land use restriction restricts it to affordable rents. Land use restriction restricts it to affordable rents. So there's caps on how much rent can be charged and how much annual income the residents can have before they're, you know, don't qualify to be a tenant. So the following 15 years, then, that's during our ownership. And so the restrictions still stay in place. Well, we're now 30 years down the road. It was 94. So in 2000, at the end of last year, it came out of compliance, which means then it's no longer a Section 42 property. It is, it basically, it's a market rate property then. So, you know, we looked at this, and we also own Applewood Two. So as Wally explained, the existing PUD encompasses both Applewood One and Applewood Two. There's 47 units in Applewood One, 45 in Applewood Two. We are just requesting an amendment to the PUD to remove the restriction to seniors only from Applewood One. Our plan is to leave Applewood Two. That comes out of compliance next year, by the way. And our plans are to leave that as a senior-only property. So in order to convert it to a family property, we had to add more parking. So as Wally explained, the parking requirement for senior is only a half a space per unit. Whereas a family property needs one, one and a half spaces per unit. There's just, you know, there's more vehicles typically. Not all the seniors have vehicles. So, you know, we looked at it, okay, how are we going to add more parking? That's what the whole revised site plan is all about, is adding that additional parking. So the, you know, the original PUD that we're asking to be amended, you know, it says seniors, seniors. It's because that was what they were going to the Iowa Finance Authority with. You know, it's very competitive. The tax credits are very competitive. They get points depending upon, you know, what, how they're developing the property. So they, it's my understanding, they got extra points by making it senior-only to, you know, to provide affordable housing for seniors only. So now that the restriction is gone, again, the property becomes a market rent property. You know, the problem is, can we, can we find, combine Applewood One and Applewood Two? Can we, can we find 92 seniors that can afford the rent, the market rent? Because the, you know, the subsidy is no longer there. The help is no longer there. We're confident we can, we can find 45 for Applewood Two. Not so confident we can find a total of 92 for Applewood One and Two. Therefore, the decision to convert it, or to remove the age restriction. So that's the request. I think they're, you know, they're, the neighbors had a petition. You know, they're, they're asking for the amendment to be denied. They want it kept senior, basically. They, they would, they argued that, you know, what was approved 30 years ago was a senior property. Why are you, I don't know that they understand that, you know, the purpose of a PUD and an age restriction is not to, not to keep from renting, you know, to all ages. I mean, it was, it was more about the parking, all right? So it made no sense for Horizon, who developed the property, to put in one and a half stalls per unit when they only needed half a stall. So, you know, it would have been additional expense. As I mentioned, our plans are to keep Applewood Two as senior. The neighbors are concerned about a domino effect. They're saying, okay, today you approve, you know, you allow Applewood One to go to market. A year from now, Mr. Gantz comes up and says, oh, now I want to convert Applewood Two to market. Well, it's still, I could make that request, but it would still have to go to the zoning advisory committee. They'd still have to, you know, to review it and approve it and the council as well. Getting the additional parking was no easy feat. I can tell you that if we tried to do it with Applewood Two, it would be very difficult, if not impossible. I can, I can guarantee you that with Applewood Three and Applewood Four, there is no extra space to add additional parking that would allow those properties to become market as well. I'm a, I'm a little surprised at the petition and, you know, the objection. The people that signed the petition, they're on Carter Road. There's a huge elevation difference. The property falls off from, you know, the south to the north. So I mean, there's a, there's a huge hill. If you, if you're on Carter Road and you're looking at the back of Applewood One and Two, you're looking at a hillside. So I don't understand their concerns. They're concerned because we're proposing to change it. People don't like change. So I, and I guess they don't want families in their neighborhood. So I, I asking you to please approve this change.
Thank you, Jim, for your comments. All right, welcome others.
Well, this is the first time I've ever been in front of the city council, so.
Welcome.
I'm not going to do the kind of job that Jim Gantz did. But I'm one of the residents. My name is Howard Rigel. I live at 3125 Pennsylvania Avenue, Apartment 112. I've been there for nine years. And we didn't get any of the, evidently, there was a big thing in the online version of the TH on Saturday about this whole thing. So it was like 3:30 in the afternoon on Saturday before I knew anything about this. And to take time to read everything, and I probably still didn't do the best job. But for us residents, we're not concerned about the parking at all. What we're concerned about is the fact that most of, I would say, easily 80% of the people that live in that building are on a fixed income. So how are they going to be able to stay in their apartment? When I, I'm paying about $1,032 a month now because I have underground parking. Because I have a 13-year-old car, and I'm afraid if I leave it outside, it's not going to run at all. But conservatively, those apartments now are going to rent for $1,450 a month. And that's for the one-bedroom, one-bath. There are apartments there that are two-bedroom and two-bath. So they, I don't, I'm just guessing, maybe some of those will be $1,700 a month. And Mr. Gantz is remodeling the apartments as people move out. And he's stated in this article to the TH that he was putting in $15,000 per unit. So I figured, I took $1,450 times 47 units. So he's got to get $68,150 every year. And in 10 years, he would have, he'll get $681,500. So his investment will be paid for within 10 years. That's a pretty good return, I would say. He mentions about the Applewood Two being senior apartments. The only way, only time we can leave our building is when our rent or when our lease is up. So if there's, and he's also talking about a development out on Radford Road that would be senior. But with, we can only break, if we break our lease, we have to pay the rent on that apartment until Horizon Management rents that apartment again. And so if that were to be the case, we would be paying rent in Applewood while we've moved to a different senior building. I just don't see how that is possible or feasible for most people. What else do you have down here that I mentioned? Okay, so the building is basically 32 years old now, I think. And the only thing, I've been there nine years. The only thing I've had done to my apartment was they had to replace the garbage disposal, and they had to replace the refrigerator. My toilet is 32 years old. It has been cleaned so many times that the top of the seat has no finish on it. And that's kind of embarrassing if you have company and there's a toilet seat that looks like that. Also, after I moved in, and I don't know what year Mr. Gantz and his brothers bought those properties, for sure. So he probably was not involved in this. I moved in in 2016 and had only been there a couple of months when we had a big torrential rainstorm. I had water pouring in the only two windows I have in my apartment. And Horizon Management, so I had to use all sorts of towels and stuff every time this happened. And so Horizon Management would give me money to use the lawn, the, the community laundry rooms there. But outside of that, until I, until I kept complaining, eventually, they had to have Portson come up, and they had to tear the siding off the, my apartment on the exterior wall. And, and I know that that's not his problem, but the question is, where are seniors supposed to be finding a safe place to live? 20% of the population in Dubuque, I checked US Census, quickfacts.com for Dubuque, is 20% are older than 65 years of age. And I would say, once you get to 75, most of those people are probably not living in their own home anymore for one reason or another, whether it be health, health concerns or whatever. I don't know where people are supposed to go, I guess, is what I'm asking. I, I know some people have already enquired, and we received, we received no information from Horizon, from Horizon Management about anything except that it was going to change to a family building. And they kept flip-flopping back and forth. First, they told us it was, then they told us it wasn't, then they told us it was, and that it was going to market rate. That is the only information that we got at all. I wanted more residents to come, but they said it wouldn't do any good. They said they were afraid of retribution from Mr. Gantz. And so it's, it's hard to get people to try to explain what the situation is. And when Sheena Moon, who I don't know, stated the property is a good fit for the new use, given the location along Pennsylvania Avenue. And she's absolutely right. That's why many seniors move there, because a lot of them don't drive. I do have my own car, and I try to help other residents when I can. But at our north entrance, which is the one closest to Mr. Burns' property, that's a city bus stop, right there. So they can handle that. People with walkers can go out there and handle, and handle that.
Hey, Howard, I've got you at about seven minutes right now, which is about what I gave Mr. Gantz. So if you wouldn't mind wrapping up, we'd appreciate that.
Okay. Well, I think that's, that's kind of what I just wanted to say.
Okay. Well, thank you, Howard, for your comments. Yeah, anyone else who would like to provide some public input? We'd appreciate it. And you can pull that microphone down a little bit, too. And the, yeah, Wally, thank you.
Definitely.
Wally's going to help you move the desk, too, just a little bit. It's magic. Thanks, Wally.
Mike, good? I'm another voice from Applewood One. And my name is Suzanne Rubenbauer. So I address is 3125 Pennsylvania. My first observation is so obvious, but I think I need to state it, that in this room and within this decision, there are so many groups that have the need to be respected and listened to. And it, it goes from everyone from the Applewood owner and to the surrounding property owners and to the current Applewood residents and perhaps their families. And along with those aspects of all these different groups, the reality is that Applewood is really expressing the condition of what's happening throughout all of Dubuque, that there's two underlying issues. The first is, throughout the city, we need affordable housing for all ages. That's a reality. And unfortunately, Applewood is representing that need. And the second reality is that we need housing needs for all generations, not just for seniors 55 up, but for young adults, for families, for recent graduates, graduates, for folks moving into the community. And sometimes I get the feeling that these generations are sometimes pitted against each other on who has the most rights or the most needs for apartments. And I think that instead of pitting the generations together, we need to realize that we all have rights, but they're different. We all have needs, but they're different. And somehow, those needs and those rights need to have different solutions to them. There's not a hierarchy of needs, but there's different solutions. So that's, that's the obvious. The second point that I want to make is that, and again, I recognize that none of this is easy. None of it is easy. The second point I like to talk about, and the final one, is that there's a little-known fact or reality about Applewood apartments, I think that needs to be thrown into the decision-making. Over the past several years where I've lived there, and I think it's now two and a half years, it's become obvious to me that the Applewood community is, it's viable, it's relational. It's a community that takes care of itself on a daily basis. Some of us have families, some do not, and some are completely alone for various reasons. Yet, the needs are met by the residents and for the residents. Applewood One has formed an internal community that answers many needs that the organizations of Dubuque do not have to be contacted for, for assistance, such as throwing together potlucks, taking one another to doctor appointments, helping those who are lonely, those who are ill, going to the grocery store. And I also realize that the city of Dubuque has made great strides in forming viable and livable communities that meet both relational and practical needs. Applewood One is doing that also by itself. So why change a viable community? That's my major point. I've been thinking about this for a long time. And I know we all have our rights, but it's like, why do we want to change something that is working where people are relational and working together? So I guess in conclusion, Mr. Mayor and the council members, please focus on affordable housing for the entire city. housing for the entire city. And help all of us in Dubuque not to pit generations against each other, especially in regards to housing. One generational need is different from another generational need, and so the solutions are different. They just are. Applewood One is taking care of senior needs efficiently. Why change that? So what works for one apartment complex might not work for another apartment complex. All generations need to be respected. I firmly believe that. But I think there's different ways of doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne, for your comments.
Yes.
My name is Rick Dickinson. I reside at 205 Hill Street, and I'm employed at Greater Dubuque Development Corporation at 900 Jackson. That was eloquent. Wonderful job. And I wanted to rise, I do rise in support of the issue before the council, and I urge your favorable consideration of it. But I do want to speak a bit to what was just said, and that is a need in our community. Greater Dubuque Development Corporation conducted a housing survey in 2003, and I know you've realized we're actually updating that with a new report that incorporates all of the city of Dubuque and all of Dubuque County, because we know the need has risen even further. But at that point in 2003, it was over 1,100 units were needed in Dubuque alone. We conducted a next-gen survey that went out to over 2,500 citizens in Dubuque, and in the top five identified needs within the community, single-family residential and apartments were the top five. Nothing fancy, meat-and-potatoes issues, we want quality healthcare, we need a place to live. In order for us to have a sustainable economy, we have to have a place where workforce can move to. Because of the shortage we have, we lose recruits to Dubuque, both in the high end of housing and the low end of housing. I agree completely. We need to address the issue of market rate rental, low and moderate income rental, and particularly, given I was born in 1953, residential, elderly housing as well. No one wants to build the first apartment that no one wants, and no one has an apartment very long that loses money. And no one wants to live in an apartment, as was just described, where, when it rains, it pours inside. So we support, we support the request. We agree that senior housing and low and moderate income housing and market rent rental is critical for our community's support, and we're fully supportive of making sure that every generation in this city has the housing that they need. And I agree, change is scary, but we hope for the best and work for the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for your comments. Others this evening? Just point out, this will be the last moment you get for input on this particular issue, otherwise it comes back to us and we have the discussion. I'll let you back up. Jim, if you wouldn't mind waiting, noticing if anybody else, and then I'll let you back up, okay? Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you, Corey.
No input.
Nothing. And we did receive written input, I know, well, at least in the packets we have input. Yeah, Jim, if you wouldn't mind coming back up, go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify, you know, we've heard from several of the residents of Applewood One with concern. Please understand that if you would deny this, that would not keep Applewood One as a rent and income-controlled property. I think my tenants are, might be misunderstanding what the effect of a denial would be. Their rents, I mean, the benefits of the Section 42 property have expired, so we cannot continue to offer below-market rents to seniors. So irregardless of what happens tonight, we have, we're working with these tenants. We've allowed them, we've said we will, we will honor the rent, the Iowa Finance Authority rent and income restrictions for two, up until January 1 of 2027. So we're giving them two years to find other housing, and we have, we are working with them. We had a, by example, we had a prospect that was looking at a unit in Applewood Two, which is not even going to come out of compliance for another year. And I said, "Did you tell them, did you tell this prospect that after a year, in a year, the rents are going to go to market rent? You have to tell them that." Well, when they, when they told them that, then they were able to find accommodation for this prospect. It was either an Applewood Three or an Applewood Four. I said, "That is an awesome answer." You know, I'm not concerned that I lost this prospect, because, you know, if they're not going to be able to afford the market rent when it goes to market rent, why, why move them in, only, you know, to have to move out when the rents go up? So, you know, we are working with the tenants, we'll continue to work with the tenants, you know, to, in their best interest, you know, to, and I intend to be proactive. Okay, you know, if, if, if there's vacancies in Applewood Three and Applewood Four, I don't know how long their restrictions continue, but I believe it's for a good period of time yet. You know, let's work to, let's work with our tenants, you know, the gentleman that was concerned about breaking the lease. You know, if you found other housing that's, that you're going to be able to afford, we're more than willing to let you out of that lease so that you can make the move and avoid, you know, so that you know where you're going after the property goes to market rent. So again, I would ask you to approve it, because it does meet the need, as Rick said. I mean, we remove the restriction, it becomes basically family workforce housing, additional housing. And there are, as the gentleman said, there, I mean, there is a recent new senior project on Radford Row. I'm not sure how many units are there, but, you know, those are very desirable projects for developers to do, so I think that, you know, they'll still, they'll still be coming online. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for your comments. All right, any others? One more. And then if you have, I think, you know, in the conversation we're having now, if there are specific questions for Mr. Gantz or things like that that are outside of the realm of the rezoning, I think those are questions that you might ask that way. But otherwise, we need to focus on the rezoning, so, okay. Suzanne, do you have a rezoning question? Yep, we'll make this our last comment, and then we'll, if you wouldn't mind coming up, we'll make this our last comment, and then we'll bring it back to the table here.
I just want to say for clarity, this was the first time that we were told or informed that it was a final termination, a legal termination. We were not aware that it could not, the tax incentive or the sliding scale would no longer be available. We were under the impression that it could be renewed. So I think that we probably need to have you come and make some more explanations to us. So that's my, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Suzanne.
Hello, my name's Pat Willis. I live at 3125 Pennsylvania, Apartment 212. I've only been a resident for a month, and they did tell me, when I signed my final contract, that I am already at that rate, and it is expensive, but I was under the impression that it was going to be a senior-only living facility. I object to renting to young families in my senior years. I don't want children running up and down the hallways, making a lot of noise. I don't want loud music or whatever else a younger family may bring to our building. Our people at our building are a community, we're not just residents. And I'd like to let everybody know, this is the importance of this building. So thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Pat, for your comments. Okay. All right. I'm gonna bring it back to the table for our discussion then, so I'll open it up for any questions or discussion from the council. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So, Mr. Gantz, if you wouldn't mind, now, this is, we were informed that this is a quasi-judicial situation, so I didn't do a lot of, if you wouldn't mind, I do have a question for you. We didn't do a lot of study of this situation, and, because we need to hear everything at once, all together. So thank you very much for everybody who participated. But I think you clarified something for me, which was, that so after those 30 years, they, you lose, as the owner, you lose the subsidy that they have been getting, which makes it pencil out for you right now. But without that subsidy, it's really hard to make things work out financially unless you change the amounts that you receive as rent. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
No. We don't receive any subsidies from the Section 42 program. We do receive favorable assessments, so the assessments are not market rate assessments. They're, well, they're considerable savings. So, you know, when we purchased the property 15 years ago, it was, you know, we purchased it at a price that was, because it was a rent-controlled and an income-controlled property. So, you know, now the property, the problem is, now the property is 30 years old, and as we stated earlier, you know, I have to invest $15,000 per unit to upgrade it, to bring it up to basically new. So, you know, at the zoning advisory committee meeting, a question was asked by one of the commissioners, "Well, can't you recredit the property?" That, that would have been, you know, something we could have considered, but that's, that's not our forte, that's not kind of, that's not the business we do.
Right.
And again, it's, that's a very competitive process, recrediting it, you have to reinvest, and then, you know, you'll, the restrictions will go back on for another period of time.
Well, thank you, that lets me understand. That one central, that's the only question I had, and you clarified that nicely.
Yeah, so, I mean, the restrictions go, it's a market rate property, we have to operate it as a market rate property, which, you know.
Sure.
Is very expensive.
Great, thank you. Mr. Wernemann, if you wouldn't mind, besides the additional parking requirements, what are the other differences in zoning requirements between senior housing and general housing? Because, I mean, there will be children, is there, do they generally have space for play areas or anything like that? Or does this property fulfill all of, all of the general housing requirements as is?
So I can't speak to, like, the actual housing requirements, if you're talking about square footage and everything for the building. I think you're, what you're referring to is, basically, if this were to come before you as a blanket slot, and they wanted to come in and just do a multifamily residential development, certain things we do take into consideration, it could be discussed, is proximity to playground areas and space like that. As you've seen, some of our multifamily residential developments do have playgrounds that have been installed, some do not, depending on the proximity. I know with this, with this property in case, we have Falk Park, which is down at the end of the streets directly to the south, and then there is the Hoover School Playground, and then also the Flora Park just down the street. But we don't have a specific requirement that they have to install the playground equipment. A lot of times, what happens for market rate ability, in order to make it a little bit more marketable, I guess you'd say, is they do encourage the outdoor playground area and space for that's associated with them, so.
So briefly, would this, the building as it is, pass muster as a general, as a general housing unit in a PUD, or would it require more space around it?
It would. So basically...
I'm sorry, what?
So, the only difference here is they're providing the additional parking, so it meets the requirements of a multifamily residential development. So, the only, the only discussion point really here is the affordability that's being brought up and the age restriction. So if this apartment came in right now and there was no affordability or no age restriction, it would be compliant, as is, the way it's laid out, with the additional one and a half parking spaces that are being provided.
Great, that's what I wanted to know. So thank you very much, I couldn't hear your response, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you like that. One last quick question, and that's about our zoning advisory commission. And so if you wouldn't mind, could you please tell me what the reasoning is behind the one no vote? If the, they generally explained why they voted for or against it?
Rich Russell, Zoning Advisory Commission, 2045 Embassy West Drive. I don't recall the reason they voted no. I assume some of the traffic and age concerns hit home with that voter, but I don't, I can't speak for that.
I see, thank you. Because, I mean, we're not allowed to even view the meeting, you know, so, because of this situation. And so maybe, at least that's my understanding, so when it is this situation, was quasi-judicial, it would be helpful to maybe bring some of that back to us. It might have been important, but it didn't really make an impression, so I don't know if it was, you were not the vote, right?
That's correct.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, there's, the tipping point here is well beyond our reach. The benefits offered to the owners under Section 42 aren't there anymore. And that changed the nature of the building, it changed the nature of the rental agreements, it's going to change their ability to utilize their property to the highest and best use. They can no longer get the benefits of having a senior housing unit. And we can't fix that. We didn't put it there, we can't fix it, it's a, it's a, it's just beyond our reach. So what's left? What's left is, is the building going to have humans that are 55 and older, or is the building just going to have humans? And I don't really care for buildings that have restrictions on who can live there in any way, shape, or form. So I'm going to support this. I think that for the people on Carter Road, it changes absolutely nothing. Still going to look out the window at a hillside, still going to look at the top of the hill in a building. For the other neighbors, it's going to be the exact same building with a little bit more parking on it. For the folks living in the, in the structure, there are other opportunities within their, the ownership to move to other units that would get you away from the, from the mixed use, if you may, want, chose to make that choice. Sounds like there's some insulation for you to, in time, that Mr. Gantz has described to allow people to make adjustments. And it's an unfortunate reality of living, is that things change. And this thing, the biggest thing that changed is the clock ran out on the benefits of having it as a senior-only living unit. And that's beyond our ability to fix, so I plan to support this tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Ms. Farber?
Sure. So Suzanne, I want to thank you very much for your presentation about the community and how everybody is watching out for their neighbor, and that is truly, from my experience, living in apartment buildings, that's the fun, and that is the grace that's provided those that live together. And no matter who those people are, that will probably continue at Applewood. And the thing is that we really, and I agree with Mr. Jones, we can't rule against who can be your neighbor. You know, that's not, I believe, and Krenna can verify that, when you rent an apartment, you cannot offer any kind of restriction on who is moving in. So, yes, no?
Yes, I mean, depending on your, the funding. So for example, based on the Section 42 restrictions that were in place for a certain period of time, they would have had to comply with those federal requirements. Once those expire, the only thing that is prohibited by law would be, for example, illegal housing discrimination and violation of the Fair Housing Act.
Right, okay. All right, so thank you for that clarification, but that doesn't mean, Suzanne, that that community relationship, or as you called it, the relational community would not continue. community relationship, or as you called it, the relational community would not continue. So, I mean, that's the one point. And then I also agree with Mr. Jones that, due to the return on the investment and the time that has elapsed in terms of the management of the building, that we have to, it's his property, and we have to really appreciate the fact that he's stepping up to the tune of three-quarters of a million dollars to upgrade the facility to welcome your new neighbors. So, I think, plus, we need housing, and I think it's market rate, we haven't done a lot of market rate recently, we've done a lot of low-income housing, but not enough market rate as well, and I think it'll be welcome to your neighborhood to have a different group of people that can help, as you mentioned, those that are benevolent, that help other people do certain chores, or get them to the doctors, you'll have maybe more people that can, can step up and assist as well. So, again, my appreciation for apartment living has just been most of my life until I returned to Dubuque to buy a house. Other than that, I've just really, really had fond memories of the communities I've lived in and with when I was in apartment buildings. So, I hope that relational community continues for you, and I just want to thank Mr. Gans for taking the time to be here tonight, and also to explain the differences and the changes, and what he's doing for the community to have more market apartments, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Ms. Wethel.
So, my question, I think, is for you, Krena, and I believe Councilwoman Farber brought up a great topic of question for me. So, now that there is without Section 42 alignment with this property, is it even legal for Mr. Gans to age-restrict the property?
So, I can't say that with certainty, because there are other exceptions to, for example, the Fair Housing Act that I mentioned a few moments ago. There are provisions within the Fair Housing Act that allow for certain qualifications or blurry lines related to senior housing, whether it's fifty-five-plus or sixty-five-plus, but there is not a certification that anyone can get outside of, say, Section 42, and a clear expectation that they be within those boundaries. Whenever this comes up, the guidance that we give when we are training people on the Fair Housing Act, and how to stay within the Fair Housing Act parameters, is that they should never assume that those exceptions apply to them, they should consult with their private legal counsel, and they need to be very, very cautious if they want to do that, because if they run afoul of that, they subject themselves to potential liability for violating the Fair Housing Act by not renting to families, for example.
Thank you. So, community is everything, and I am aware of, at a distance, the community that you have there. And we know that, working in healthcare, when we have bonds to community, it extends our life, literally. It extends the, not only does it offer to the quality of life, but it extends the years of our life. And so, I can appreciate how, how hard this must be for you to consider in these discussions, and I'm sorry you're in this position. Mr. Burns had provided a note attached to our documents, and within that was a flyer. Applewood, this was January twenty-eighth of 2025, is the date upon it, and I did not verify this, this was just simply attached to his documents. "Applewood One Senior Apartments Transitions to Applegate One Apartments in Dubuque, Iowa. Horizon Management Services, Inc., certified as a woman-owned business. We bring forty years of experience in property management and LIHTC compliance services," which stands for the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Certification. And then it goes on to announce that Applewood will now be transitioning to family housing. But that was in January twenty-eighth, and today's April twenty-first, so that was a little early. It feels a little, it feels a little disappointing to me that that was released to the end of January to folks, when it had not yet come to us for the decision-making process at this point, and I understand the excitement of offering properties to people and trying to drive interest, but I was, I guess I was disappointed to see that. Our population is shrinking. In Iowa, our population is shrinking. Our schools are closing. And so, when we don't allow families to live in communities where they can afford to live, I worry that more schools will close. I worry that children will have fewer opportunities to thrive in our community. And so, it is a difficult decision, and it's difficult to sit here and listen to the position you are in. But I also have to think about all of those people too, who are families, who are struggling to find an affordable place to live, and although this will be market-rate housing, there are a lot of families that need market-rate housing. And so, these kind of decisions, I agree, are in some ways rather black and white, because when someone owns a property privately, and they are willing to make an investment into property, I need to be grateful for that opportunity for our community, because I have someone who is a locally-owned business owner, who wants to invest in their property and make it better, and make it affordable and accessible to people who need housing. The transition of that is the difficult part to swallow. But I don't feel that I can hold up this situation. I feel that it's actually my duty to support this issue, even though I know that it is a difficult thing to say to you. Thank you.
Ms. Russell, thanks, Ms. Wethel. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. There were a couple of, well, there's been a lot of really good input from residents, and we really do take the time to read them, and one of the pieces of information that we got, someone said that they thought these public hearings were just a, just a formality, and I can assure you that they are, they are not. Clearly, you know, we take the time to listen to our residents' input, we listen to their concerns and their questions, and address any assumptions that might be incorrect, or clarify anything they might need to know. And in the end, you know, the decision may not be what you've hoped for, but we do take the time to listen and review the answers and all the options that are out there. I liked, I liked to hear that Mr. Gans is willing to make, to make terms for residents that may need to move, the fact that they have two years to figure out where will be a better place for them to locate, or perhaps they'll want to stay in this, in this new situation. One of the other things that was mentioned in one of the letters was the neighborhood character, and I think it's, while the building is currently senior living, I think it's really important to assume that any new renters that move in, any new families, will not be a detriment to our neighborhood. I think we can all work together to be good neighbors, and if we have any concerns with our new neighbors, we need to make sure that we talk to them and see what, you know, we can, what we can do about that. So, I think that although this may be a challenge, change is always difficult for people, I think the fact that these tax, these credits have expired, we need to make some decisions that are based on today's information and not what we had thirty years ago. So, I think it is right to support this.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Mr. Sprank? Okay. Well, oh, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
I've got to ask you just one, one quick question, and of course, you know, the neighbors, I can, I can predict that, you know, once this change, and I support the change, once this has changed, there will be cutting through the neighbors' yards. I mean, if they're gonna go over to Hoover to play, or they're gonna go to their friend's house, or, so, that's something to think about. Mr. Butterfield, I mean, Mr. Gans, there's Butterfield Road, which might, if there's a connection to that somehow, but, I mean, I've lived where there's school kids, and they just rip right through your yard, and, you know, I didn't mind, but some of my neighbors did. You know, so, that is a concern for the neighborhood, if there was a way to, especially since there's nothing on Pennsylvania except to park a long way away, but that Hoover, that is very tempting for me, and I might cut through yards myself when I was a kid. But did you have something to say about that?
Yeah, I just want to address that. So, we did take that into consideration when these were built, because of the concerns of individuals coming through the yard, so what you can't see, I don't know if you can, are you guys being able to see your screen, I don't know, you don't have it posted up above here. So, this blue line is actually, there is a private walk, sidewalk, that connects from here to this Butterfield Stub Street, that provides access, as a pedestrian access, for individuals who are walking down from the apartments, to be able to get over to Carter Road, to be able to get over to the school district. Now, that's if they want to walk all the way down, it doesn't necessarily, people may cut through yards still, but we wanted to make sure that there was a pedestrian connection when we had all these apartments that were built the first time. It doesn't show up very well, and that's because it is kind of blocked over aerial-wise, so.
Well, it sounds like a great idea to me. All right, thank you, I'm done, Mr. Mayor.
It's like a great idea thirty years ago. Yeah. Well, this is, this has been a very helpful discussion. I actually learned quite a bit just tonight in this, in this situation. I have to agree with Ms. Russell, you know, I mean, if this was a formality, we wouldn't spend hours on rezonings in this room, and we do, we spend hours on rezonings in this room. I think we do a really good job of being able to take all the information in and allowing people to have some real discussion. I always, I tend to learn quite a bit in these, in these moments, in thinking about how these situations come together, and I got a better understanding tonight, for instance, from, from Mr. Gans, about the Section 42 situation, that is much clearer in my head now. And so, when it comes down to it, I think there's a couple of things going on here. One is, from the rezoning standpoint, I am, I'm not really seeing good evidence that is before us, that would say that this is a rezoning that should be denied. This is a, this is a situation that I think fits within this particular property, in this particular land. So, that, that's that part. Another part of this is a property management part. Some of the discussion kind of, I think, moved into discussions that are, that need to be had between tenants and the landlord in this situation, maybe getting some clarity, maybe getting some better communication. I would, I can't, we can't do anything to legislate that, but I would encourage it. I just, I would just say, I encourage you all to talk to each other as frequently as possible, to try and figure this out from your end, as you make this transition. I'm thankful to hear, and I appreciate the offer to have tenants stay through January first of twenty-seven. I think that's, I think that's a great offer, I think it's a generous one, that I think is really helpful in a moment like this, that people don't just get immediately pushed out of the living situation that they're in, so I'm happy to hear that. But number one thing, and Suzanne, I'm coming back to you, and I appreciated all your comments, but Suzanne, you said something that I want to make sure that everybody recognizes. I'm, you talked about the fact that we can't be, we can't be basically choosing kind of winners and losers in this situation, we can't be pitting generations against each other. It's one of the things I'm most proud of on this council, is that we have not done that. We have worked really hard, I mean really hard, to expand housing in all directions for all people in our community. When Greater Development Corporation came to us, and they said, "You're not doing enough to spur housing along," we started to do more, and all of a sudden, we went from needing eleven hundred units to having two thousand four hundred units moving through some stage of development. The reason that's important to state in this moment is that a lot of that housing is, it works the whole spectrum. There, it's housing for people who are struggling with low income, modern income, workforce housing, market-rate housing, downtown housing, west-side housing, south-side housing, all over the city. I think it's something that we as a community need to be proud of, that we're pushing that forward, because it absolutely is an important point that you made, that we cannot be choosing only certain groups to live in our community, we need to be a welcoming community for everybody. I too sympathize with the situation that you're falling into here, in that it's, that's the one part about this that is really challenging, is that there are a good number of people that are going to have to move, and I recognize that, and that is really, that is really difficult to have to move something forward knowing that. But I really don't see, one, anything, any good reason, or any other things that could be easily done with this particular property, given the situation that it's in, but I also don't see any good evidence that says that this particular rezoning is inappropriate, and it's something that we should deny. So, I will be voting for it, and I will be continuing to push, and hopefully, with the help of my colleagues here at this desk, to continue to increase access to housing in Dubuque. I think we need to do everything we can to make sure that that's happening, not only that we've cleared the way for those two thousand four hundred units, but that they're actually getting built. Whatever we can do from a city government standpoint, and from a community standpoint, to make it happen, and make sure that people can afford it, and people can live in the situations that they need to. So, thank you again to everybody for your comments tonight, I do appreciate this conversation. And with that, we've all had an opportunity to talk here, so, the motion on the table is to waive, to receive and file and waive the three readings, so basically move this along this evening. Motion by Jones, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Public hearing number two is resolution adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan for the greater downtown urban renewal area, version twenty-two-five-point-one.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Russell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Russell, second by Wethel. Cory, am I coming to you tonight?
You are.
Cory, thank you.
Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending adoption of a resolution adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan, version twenty-two-five-point-one, for the greater downtown urban renewal area. The amended and restated urban renewal plan would include a new project under the Public Purpose Activities Grown and Development, Inc. Inclusion of this project is necessary to accommodate the anticipated issuance of urban renewal tax increment incentives under a development agreement for the mixed-use development at Fifth and Main Street. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. We're on a public hearing to consider city council adopt a resolution adopting an amended and restated urban renewal plan, version twenty-two-five-point-one, for the greater downtown urban renewal area. Do we have any public input on this item? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No.
Thank you. All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none, hearing none. These are, these do tend to be a little bit more of a formality in the process that we go through. Okay. Motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
I'll skip Farber, because she's away from the dais. Jones.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye. That motion passes six zero.
Public hearing number three is Old Mill Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase Two Public Hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move to receive and file the documents and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. Cory, please.
City Engineer Dossahoyes is recommending approval of the planned specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of twelve million seven hundred thousand for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase Two, through the adoption of the attached resolution. The older sections of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer that deliver wastewater to the Catfish Creek Pump Station were constructed in the late nineteen-sixties. It is common for sanitary sewer pipes to remain in service for sixty years or longer. However, when sizing an interceptor sewer, it is not common to design it to handle predictive flows more than fifty years into the future. Most often, a twenty-five-year time span is considered. The Catfish Creek Pump Station was last upgraded in nineteen ninety-five, based on predicting growth over the next twenty to thirty years, consistent with a twenty-five-year life for a lift station. Despite challenges due to terrain, like steep slopes, bluffs, shallow rock, et cetera, the city has experienced significant growth within the Catfish Creek Sewer, and only considering development that has occurred over the last twenty years. Within the tributary area, the designed flow to the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer and the Catfish Creek Pump Station has grown to six-point-five MGD, or million gallons per day, since the pump station was last upgraded in nineteen ninety-five to a capacity of eight-point-oh MGD. Due to the potential development area within the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer tributary area, the city hired Strand Associates in late twenty-eighteen to develop a better and Due to the potential development area within the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer tributary area, the city hired Strand Associates in late 2018 to develop a better understanding of the hydraulic capacity of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Collection System. The analysis of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer and the Catfish Creek Pump Station involved the implementation of a flow metering program and the development of a sanitary sewer model. One of the things that the computer model revealed is that some wet weather events will result in the flow rising above the top of the pipe at certain locations, such that the sanitary sewer, sanitary system becomes pressurized, which is an indicator of possible sanitary sewer overflows. In late December of 2020, Strand provided the city with final drafts of both the study for Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Collection System and a more focused technical memo which evaluated the effect of adding new industrial flow to the existing system. On January 4th, 2021, a state revolving fund, planning and design loan, Intended Use Plan, or IUP, application in the amount of $350,000, was submitted to the state for the Catfish Creek Lift Station and Force Main Project that involves system improvements to address wet weather-related overflows at the Catfish Creek Lift Station and provide capacity for future development within the Catfish Creek Sewer Shed. On April 28th, 2021, the city authorized Strand Task Order 1, which provided for the development of a facility plan and design of the Old Mill Road Lift Station to a 30% level. This level of design provided the city with a basis of design, a refined cost estimate, and the necessary information to allow the city to submit a facility plan to the Iowa DNR to begin the state revolving fund construction loan process. The 30% design followed the recommended improvement option identified in the January 7th, 2021 Memo Regarding the Results of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Interceptor System Study, which evaluated the existing system capacity and identified improvements to ensure that it has adequate, it has adequate capacity for existing developments and for growth throughout the tributary area. The city of Dubuque submitted a facility plan to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources in May of 2021 for the construction of a 20-MGD sanitary sewer lift station and 30-inch dual force mains. The facility plan is based on the results of an intensive evaluation of the existing interceptor collection and pumping systems that transport sewage to the Water Resource Recovery Center. Several options were considered and the city chose to proceed with the design and construction of the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, a recommended option. At the June 7th, 2021 council meeting, the city council approved the facility plan and[779.86][779.89]intended use plan application for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project. Part of the SRF loan process is to complete an environmental review for the affected project area, which is conducted by the IDNR staff along with other state agencies. One of the items that is looked at is the history of the area to determine the historical significance of the area, if any. The Office of the State Archaeologists conducted a Phase One archaeological study due to a portion of the project alignment running through the town, the old town of Rockdale. Some artifacts from the settlement were recovered and it was determined that a more in-depth Phase Two study was warranted. The Office of the State Archaeologists and the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, directed the city to complete a Phase Two archaeological study. Due to the results of the Phase Two study, it was determined that an alternate alignment needed to be evaluated to avoid the town of Rockdale. Once the alternate alignment was selected, a second Phase Two archaeological study was completed for the alternate alignment. The alternate alignment was cleared by the SHIPO office and the design was able to be completed for the entire project. Due to available funding and the funding being spread over five fiscal years, a revised facility plan was submitted in May of 2024, then split the project into two phases. The first phase being the lift station and site development and the second phase being the force main from the new lift station to WRC along with the force main structures. The revised facility plan was approved by the Iowa DNR in June 2024. The phased approach allowed for the environmental and archaeological clearances specific to the Phase Two portion of the overall project to be finalized while proceeding with Phase One. This approach allowed the city to begin Phase One earlier with the longest estimated construction duration of two years and start Phase Two with an estimated construction duration of one year, a year later, and still maintain a completion date of December 2026 for both phases. The Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project is the first of several improvements that are needed within the Catfish Creek Interceptor Sewer System to provide adequate capacity to serve existing and future development within the city and to allow for future additional flow from future growth areas. Once constructed and in service, the 20-million-MGD Old Mill Road Lift Station will intercept over 80% of the flow which is currently conveyed to the undersized eight-MGD Catfish Creek Lift Station. With the reduction in flow coming from the Catfish Creek Interceptor System, the west end of town, the Catfish Creek Lift Station will then be primarily dedicated to the Key West area and the growth areas along US Highway 15161 to the airport, which is served by the Granger Creek Interceptor Sewer. Currently, the Iowa DNR has issued sanitary sewer permits with peak flows totaling approximately 3.5 MGD for the areas south of town since 2017. The reduction in flow from the Catfish Creek Interceptor System will provide the Catfish Creek Lift Station with enough capacity to adequately serve the Granger Creek Sewer Shed into the near future. Project Phases One and Two have been funded over multiple fiscal years, fiscal year '22 through fiscal year '27. The total project funding provides for design, property acquisition, and construction. The funding consists of a combination of ARPA, sewer fund cash, and state revolving fund loans. Both phases have a completion date set for December 2026. The table below details how the complete project is funded through multiple fiscal years. So for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, fiscal year 2022, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One and Two Design, $3,546,614. Fiscal year '23, Phase One Construction, $1,131,320. Fiscal year 2024, Phase One Construction, $6,161,306. Fiscal year 2025, Old Mill Road Lift Station, Phase One and Two Design, $300,000. Fiscal year 2025, Phase One Construction, $12,312,327. Fiscal year 2026, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One Construction, Fiscal year '26, Phase Two Construction, $7,491,547,491,547. Fiscal year '27, Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project, Phase One Construction, And in fiscal year 2027, Phase Two Construction, $4,477,103. And that's a total project funding of $45,106,791. The estimate of probable cost for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project Phase Two is summarized as follows. Construction estimate is $12,700,000. Contingency is $1,270,000. Contract administration, construction, and engineering, $600,000. And a 0.5% SRF loan origination fee, $72,850. For a total project cost of $14,642,850. And total SRF loan rounded to the nearest thousand, $14,643,000. Here's a general timeline of the Catfish Creek Sewer Capacity Issue. Improvements in the city of Dubuque sewer system have been a years-long process. The capacity issues in the Catfish Creek Sewer Shed in particular have been well-known and openly discussed and reported on. In fact, there was an article in the Telegraph Herald on 8/14/24. In 2013, the Water Resource Recovery Center underwent a $64.2-million facility upgrade to increase performance and capacity in the city sewer system. Sanitary sewer rates rose in the years leading up to and immediately following that renovation. This was in conjunction with the capital expenditures on this upgrade that were funded with a combination of city debt, state funds, and federal funds. In 2018, the city hired Strand Associates to study the capacity of the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Collection System. In 2020 and 2021, the impacts of the COVID pandemic on the city's spending were very real. You may recall there were hiring and spending freezes during that time in cities across the United States as everyone waited to see what federal funding might become available to help with this international disaster. City employees did not receive a pay raise. Recognizing families in the community were struggling to hold on to their jobs, the city council did not raise sanitary sewer rates. Following the pandemic, the city council, which is today's current city council, began prioritizing and budgeting for sewer system infrastructure upgrades every single year. That includes 2021, the sewer system infrastructure upgrade, including Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer System; 2022, Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Projects Debt Policy Direction, Phasing and Funding; in 2023, Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Old Mill Road Lift Station; and in 2024, Catfish Creek Sewer Upgrades, Old Mill Road Lift Station. In 2021, the city hired Strand to begin the design of a new lift station on Old Mill Road. In 2022, work officially began on the final design and securing SRF funding for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project and Granger Creek Sanitary Sewer System Project. Then, very unfortunately, from 2022 to 2024, work was halted as a result of extensive environmental reviews required by the State of Iowa Historic Preservation Office to access SRF funding, which is required to fund this project. This long review forced the city to change its original plans and move the alignment for the sewer lines. This was a major delay that did not allow the project to progress until 2024. As all of this was happening, Dubuque experienced increased development like we haven't seen in years. From June to September 2024, the city council approved the contracts and issuance of debt funding to complete these projects and they are now actively being built. Initiation, funding, and completion of this project is consistent with the mayor and city council making this project and other sanitary sewer projects a priority over the last several years. If not for the delays caused by the federal environmental review requirements, this project would have been completed sooner. Other major projects in the sewer shed must connect to this project, so that also delayed initiation of those projects. But they are budgeted and construction will begin as soon as this project is completed. In fact, our standard process, practice is we do not bid projects that are in future CIP budgets because that restricts flexibility for future budget decisions. But for these sanitary sewer projects, the city is expediting the bidding of the projects. As each element of these projects is completed, it incrementally removes downstream capacity limits in the sewer shed. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Corey. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
If you, if you don't mind, there's a couple of other facts that I wanted to say that I could have put in this memo.
Oh, sure, Mike.
For the public hearing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing I would like to put out is we're talking about building a 20-million-gallon-a-day lift station here. This is just one of our sanitary sewer sheds. And to give you some sense of scale, the entire sewer plant from all of our sewer sheds on a dry weather day is 6.7 million gallons a day coming into the sewer plant. And this one new lift station is 20 million gallons a day. And now, wet weather conditions, our peak flow into the plant is just over 20 million gallons a day. But remember, that's from every sanitary sewer shed in the city, not just this one. So we really believe that we're building it for the future. The other thing I'd like to mention is there have been some comments about, and I know this is not a budget hearing, but it's, I think it's an important point. There have been some comments about the sewer rate increase. So this, in FY '26, I'm recommending a 9% sanitary sewer rate increase so we can afford to do $141 million, I'm sorry, it's $131 million in projects over a five-year period. And so we looked at the sewer rate increases for other cities, and these are cities in the state with a population greater than 50,000 that also operate a sewer plant, because not every city operates a sewer plant. Some have a regional system or they, they go into another community sewer plant. And so if you look at them, there's only eight of them, including Dubuque. And if you look at from fiscal year 2020 to fiscal year 2026, so that's six-year period, Dubuque has averaged an annual rate increase of 6%, which of course does exceed the rate of inflation, but you can see the massive capital projects that we're doing. But even at that, 6% of those eight cities were basically right in the middle, were the fifth lowest or fourth highest of those eight. And the average of the other seven is about 5.5%. So our 6% average per year increase is, the average is about 9% lower than our 6%. So I think we are making a massive commitment to our system and that costs money, but at the same time, we're trying to be reasonable in the recommended rate increases over time. And one other thing I'd point out is one of those eight cities that I mentioned is Council Bluffs, and they actually subsidize their sanitary sewer rates with their local option sales tax. Now, I don't know of anybody else that does that, but it's right in their budget document that they do it. So, so they're, they're a city that does do that. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council approve the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost of $12,700,000 for the Old Mill Road Lift Station and Force Main Project Phase Two through the adoption of the attached resolution. Do we have any public input on this item this evening? Seeing none here, anything virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. All right, we'll bring it back to us. I'm going to kick us off. Mike, I have a couple of questions for you. So this has been, one of the things that, you know, you mentioned this isn't a budget hearing necessarily, but, and some of the questions I'm going to ask aren't directly related to the plan specification and form of contract here, but they are related to the sewer capacity issues and the Old Mill Road Lift Station as a, basically as a linchpin for a lot of the sewer capacity that we have, you know, in, you know, currently in a very specific part of town. So there's a, we've received some major concerns from, I know I've received a number of phone calls and emails from people who are working on development projects within the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Shed. So I want to just get some clarification on a couple of things. One, and I don't, I'm not asking this to be facetious, I'm literally not asking this way, in this way, but I want to make sure that I'm really clear about something. Can people still flush their toilets in the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Shed? Do we have that big of a capacity issue?
So all of our existing users of our system can continue to use our system. And a matter of fact, there can be expansions to that. So if a apartment or individual house or a business, so 14 employees or less, 14 residents or less, like in an apartment complex, they can get permits to hook up. Anything above that, everyone needs to be individually analyzed to see which one of the, so in, in the Catfish Creek Sanitary Sewer Shed, there's actually several different finger links that go off in that. I think it's, it's middle... I think it's middle, north, and I think the other one is south. So but each project needs to be individually analyzed. And then, even if it's analyzed that that individual new development would provide too much flow to get a DNR permit to connect, because that's who makes the final decision, is the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. It was determined that the project is too big to get an IDNR permit to connect. There still can be temporary solutions that get you to the point when we have these projects done, when the flow restrictions wouldn't exist, that you could implement temporary solutions to still build your project. And then later-- by-- and actually, when I say later, over the next four years incrementally, there's going to be improvements in the system up to December of 2029, when basically almost all the improvements will be done. So even new developments can hook up or do temporary solutions to wait till hookup and still build.
Okay, that's helpful. You answered my second question, which was, you know, can new development connect? So you just answered that with the answer of 14 units or less can, but anything more than that needs further analysis, is what I heard. So--
Yes. When we say 14-- when we say 14 units, I don't know if that's the right word. I believe it's 14 employees or less, so if it's--
Oh, sorry.
--a business. And I'm not exactly sure kind of how it's defined for residential. Is it 14 units, or is it units that would be occupied by 14 people or less, which I guess would be like a three flat or a four flat?
Give me one second. I'm pulling it up so I can read it to you.
Okay. Krena's going to be pulling that up, Mike. While she does that, I'm going to ask another question. When did we, as a city, learn about the fact that we would need to restrict this in this way, that the DNR, the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, was beginning to restrict us on new hookups?
So we learned that very recently, earlier this year, earlier in 2025. But we did anticipate that we could potentially have flow restriction issues, which is why we've been initiated this study several years ago and why the mayor and council has been increasing the rates at this more accelerated rate so that we could implement these capital projects, because we could see it coming. And then what happened was, it's just come a lot faster than we expected because development in Dubuque has just caught on fire. It's just taken off.
Hang on one second, Krena. I want to ask a follow-up question, then I'll come back to you. Thank you, Mike. So my final question here, before we go back to Krena with the answer that she found, when did we start talking to developers about what we knew, you know, that-- who had active development projects that were needing to connect to the sanitary sewer system?
So really, as soon as we knew it. We started visiting with developers. All along, though, we asked developers as part of our design review team process to provide us their flow projections, because we know every project of any significance above those numbers we just talked about are going to have to get that DNR permit. But as soon as we knew that the DNR was going to start scrutinizing those more and potentially delaying DNR permits to hook up to our sanitary sewer system, we began telling developers and trying to work with them to say, okay, what is your schedule? What is the scope of your project? And what are your flow projections? And then, if it looks like the combination of your flow projections and how quickly you want to get it done, we're not going to yet be done with our improvements, then the next question is, what temporary improvements can we look at in partnership with you that can still allow you to do your development on the schedule you want to do it, but will take an interim step? For instance, we're in negotiations right now with a developer that wants to do, I think his ultimate, it's a three-phase project, but I think the ultimate is 200 apartment units. And we're right now working with an engineering firm and the developer to identify a temporary solution to get that development so it can start on the developer's schedule, but would not initially hook directly up to the system without this interim step. And this interim step might be, in this case, might be a storage tank that during peak flows, like during rainstorms, the tank would accept the waste. And then, when it was a dry weather condition, or at night, when other people are generally not using the system, it would then drain into the sanitary sewer system. And as I say, temporary, that could be somewhere between two and four years, depending how quickly he wants to do his three phases. So that's just an example.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Krena?
Okay. So what Mike is referencing are the wastewater construction and operating permit provisions that exist within the Iowa Administrative Code. So in the Iowa Administrative Code, this lives at 567.64. And there are some provisions in there that outline that a construction permit is not required in certain circumstances related to wastewater construction and operating permits. And Mike has referenced a couple of those. So disposal systems or extensions or additions to existing disposal systems receiving only domestic or sanitary sewage from buildings or housing that are occupied by 15 persons or less. So in my understanding-- Gus and Todd, I may need help with this-- is when we talk about domestic or sanitary sewage, that means non-industrial, correct? Okay, they're nodding. So yes, non-industrial. Anything besides non-industrial could fall within that exception to the permit requirement. The other that Mike referenced in that last example was the opportunity where there is holding, essentially, temporarily, storage, things like that, and then it is metered as the system can handle it. So those are some provisions within those administrative code sections that we're looking at to determine where they apply and how we can work within them. And then, as they mentioned, there's some case-by-case analysis based on location, use, numbers, things like that.
Thank you, Krena. All right, thanks for your patience, everybody. I appreciate those answers. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Jones.
I really appreciate the depth of the information in that memo. It was-- although it was tedious to read and tedious to hear, it was accurate. And this project's a no-brainer. It has to happen. I have to support it. But the rest of the information that was in that memo is important to the community here. We have some people angry at us because of the situation that we're in right now today, where large new developments may not be able to attach to the sewer system because the city grew faster than it did. That memo outlined a history of decades of work to improve the system, and it's not inexpensive. We've been pedaling, frankly, as fast as we reasonably can. And even if it weren't expensive, it takes time. If money wasn't an object, time and human resources to get it done is an object. So the combination of not having the fiscal resources immediately available and the human resources and contractor resources and just the reality of moving pipe and laying new pipe and putting these installations in takes a lot of time. And then you add regulatory approvals to it, like all of a sudden we find ourselves in a-- going to dig up a historic site and it costs us two years of development of the project. I certainly understand how we got where we are. Development exceeded our expectations. We've been looking at this system for decades, trying to figure out what incremental improvements need to happen that the community can afford without breaking the bank. And we're on a good path, and we can see the light at the end of the tunnel. Nonetheless, it's a real problem for some developers that are trying to do big things right now. And there are some intermediate solutions that are being engineered as we speak that may or may not solve the immediate problem for them. Otherwise, it's going to be like-- longest time of a kid's year is between Thanksgiving and Christmas, when you're waiting for Santa Claus. Rest of the year goes by pretty fast. We're looking at waiting for Santa Claus for a few years until we can get here. And that's-- there's nothing at all within the scope of our power at this table to fix that or to change that. It's just a hard reality that the city council, the city staff, the engineers have been turning themselves inside out about this for decades, knowing that it was coming, knowing where our shortcomings were, working on solutions and incremental programs that were doable to improve the situation and get us to the finish line. And bad analogy, there is no finish line. We're going to continue to grow, and we're going to continue to need to re-engineer systems and upgrade them. And the other important point that people have to remember, this is a city that's almost 200 years old. There's some old things in the ground. There's some assumptions made by really great engineers of yore that couldn't possibly imagine the scope of need in this decade, in this time that we're in right now. So the realities come at you from a bunch of directions. The realities of the state of the system, the realities of the state of the economy and cash flow into the city, the realities of other city needs. While all this has been going on, we've updated equipment on the fire department, we've updated wages and benefits across the board for city employees to get them and keep them. We've been working real hard on police retention and some modernization of how we do law enforcement in Dubuque. A lot of things to be proud of. So everything has to fit. All the pieces have to fit in the pie ten, and that's what we're trying to do with the budget process. By the way, the most transparent budget process I can find in any city anywhere, where the length of time and consideration in this room occurs. So I'm proud of where we're going. I'm disappointed that we are where we are, but we are where we are. And this is a giant step forward towards resolution. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Resnick?
Thank you. Mr. Sahoyas, I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I remember when I first ran in 2007, Catfish Creek overflows and breakages were one of the issues that I brought up. So as Mr. Jones says, it's been a challenge for many years. I have two questions for you. First of all, do we intend to replace the existing pipe with wider pipes? And/or are we going to augment what we have there and put in that, relining some existing decent pipe? If it's still, you know, on the new-ish side, are we going to try to save some of that, or it's just too small anyway?
Okay, I'll try to answer. Gus Sahoyas, city engineer. So what we're doing is we're going to build an old mill lift station, so that'll handle 20 million gallons of flow. So right now, during rainfall events, we see upwards of, you know, 10, 12, 13 million gallons. So the pipe from the old mill lift station to the Catfish Station will basically be abandoned from Old Mill to the station and just take care of the sewers that go into it by gravity now. So at some point in the distant future, we'll reline that and continue to use it. It'll be way less flow than it has now. So we'll be using some of the existing pipe, but the pipe upstream from the old mill lift station will be completely replaced with much larger pipe. So it'll go up to 54-inch versus like 18-inch now. So it'll be able to handle future growth, 50, 75 years in the future. So all the land that's been calculated that could potentially come into the city and be developed, it will be able to handle that much after we're all gone. So--
Great, thank you very much for that. And one more question. It's the very complex plan that we listened to and that you've worked out, and it sounds like, you know, you've thought it long and hard about this. One thing that was mentioned in the memo is ARPA funds. It's a federal grant. So is that money in the bank, or we're hoping for it, or is it guaranteed? What's the status of that?
That money has been designated to this project, and it's already taken care of. So we do have those ARPA funds.
Great.
And they had to be allocated before the first of the year, so that was done. So those funds are already in the bank.
And this is during a budget session, but we do-- I mean, we have a long-range plan for, you know, these rates. We look at them, swallow hard, say this is what's going to-- what we need to do, but don't we have a five-year plan to-- I mean, so you can tell what we're going to plan to do in the next year, the next year, the next year, right?
Yeah.
So this is not a surprise. It's not something, as Mr. Jones says, it's not something that we want, but it's absolutely necessary. And is there anything else you can enlighten us about to--
The only thing I'll say right now is I want to thank Todd Irwin, he's here. He's been shepherding this project from day one. I think pretty much it was his idea. I think it's going to save the city a lot of money in the future, and I appreciate all Todd's work on it.
Well, thank you, Todd. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Others?
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Ms. Wethel?
I want to thank Cory for her voice tonight in reading that memo. I have also fielded calls from folks in the community who have properties, who are developers. And I can appreciate the frustration of hearing limitations on our capacity that may affect them or may not. What I will say is this, anyone who says this city is not transparent does not know the depth of what our city staff does to create a transparent view to our city council. In reading the materials on this topic since April of '22, I'm not as well-versed as all of you, but I will say, one question I had is, well, when did we know? Well, since I've been on council, we knew that this was a plan and a project that needed to happen to do our number-one job, which is secure the safety of our community. Our safety is police, our safety is fire, and EMS, and our safety is infrastructure. And we, as a council, prioritize that. You can review our goals and priorities, and you will see it reflected there. And so I just salute our city staff for the work that they have done on this. There has been incredible work from so many departments to come forward with what I would say is actually a small memo compared to the amount of work that has been done to get us to this point. And I'm really proud of staff for where we are, and I'm proud, as a council, that we have supported this long before I came and will, I believe, continue to do so. Thank you.
All right. Well, you might think that's the end of the conversation about sanitary sewers, but it's only the first of three nights where we get to talk about sanitary sewers, essentially, this week. So look forward to tomorrow night and Thursday night to have further discussion. Gus, we may have just shortened your engineering presentation just by maybe like three or four minutes, so maybe. We'll see. All right. No further discussion on this item tonight, so the motion before us here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
All right, we have public input this evening.
Good evening, and thank you. Clark Slows, 2925 Burlington Street. The reason why I'm here tonight is the union contract that you're going to be considering a little bit later. There's four items of concern I have. One is looking at the, you know, the 3% raises, 2.75% raises. Well, again, I use my standard inflation question, why, when, depending on what source you look at, it ranges from 2.4 to 2.7? The second item-- The second item is longevity scale, that basically you eliminated a step and you raised the maximum to 7%. Now, looking at all the others who, you know, information from the city who qualify for longevity raises, the maximum is five. Are you going to change all those other people who are receiving those to that 7%? And the third item I have is, is sick leave. You know, your first sentence in the contract state what sick leave is for. Paraphrasing it, it's basically an insurance policy in case you have to use it if you get sick, have an illness, injury, or accident. It's not meant to be as a retirement payout when you retire. Wish I would have had that when I was the department head. Wish I would have had longevity when I was the department head. The other thing, the fourth thing is the step system, you know, basically the very bottom. There's the potential between longevity raises greater than inflation and steps, and the step system that raises over the next four years of that contract can be substantial. And those are the concerns I have. And as a side note, kind of dealing with some of the comments that were made about sanitary sewer, Mike's kind of done his homework and has probably almost eliminated my questions for tomorrow night. So maybe I can watch hockey playoffs instead of being here.
We hope so, Jay.
My wife ran me out the door. She says, you're going to miss hockey playoffs. They last for a while, so who knows, maybe a hockey game might break out here. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Clark, for your comments. Seeing no more public input here. Anything virtually?
No input.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is Heeb Street Reconstruction Project Award Public Improvement Project.
Mr. Mayor?
Rousell.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Rousell, second by Wethel. Cory, please.
The city received sealed bids on April 10th, 2025 for the Heeb Street Reconstruction Project. City engineer Gus Sahoyas is recommending award to the low bidder, Pierce Tobin, in the amount of $655,020.84, which is 7.57% below the engineer's estimate. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. We have talked about this project before already. Okay. Motion is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number two is request for city council ratification of Teamsters Local 120 Bus Operators, July 1st, 2025 Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file and ratify.
Second.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Farber. Cory, please.
Chief Human Resources Officer Shelley Stickford is recommending city council ratification of the City of Dubuque Teamsters Local 120 Bus Operators Collective Bargaining Agreement to become effective July 1st, 2025. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Cory. Discussion. Seeing none, hearing none so far. Mr. Resnick?
Mr. Mayor, I thought that you might want to, instead of me saying it, express our appreciation for the unions that, because Mr. Van Milligan has said it several times, they've been very, you know, they've been very good working with this. And if you wouldn't mind saying a few words about how important that is to what one of our major goals is, that our gentleman mentioned today is, is retention and attraction of, of good city staff. And so that's why if, if we were to say, you know, you know, wish you had when you were working, I wish I had and everybody wishes. And that's why if, if they're able to get that wish once in a while, hopefully they'll stay with us. You know, we have got a great staff. But Mr. Mayor, if you would.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for, for teeing that up, Mr. Resnick. I mean, you know, the, the process of going through bargaining with the unions that we work with, you know, throughout the city is, is one that, you know, we've, we've talked frequently about police and fire, for example. Here we're, we're discussing the Teamsters Local. And, you know, I think it's a process that takes, it, it doesn't usually take weeks, it usually takes months in just making sure that everything is something that everybody can come to the table and agree on eventually. You know, the, what was just pointed out by, by Clark in his comments about some of the, the challenges that we may face, you know, based on the, you know, for example, the potential for substantial raises and, and wage increases over time, we do recognize that. And it is something that is, something we're trying to plan for because of the fact that we are making it such an important goal to, to retain, first of all, to attract quality staff and then retain those staff while they're here. It's been something that this council has prioritized for two years in a row. It has been something that the staff have looked at with a compensation study that was very in-depth and is actually still in the process of working its way through to be able to understand all the, what the compensation and classification of each employee does mean. And it hasn't been an easy process. It's been a difficult one. It's been a lot of, a lot of discussions, a lot of information finding that is not always easy to hear. Sometimes wages are higher than people expected, sometimes they're lower than people expected. It's been a challenging process for an organization to go through, but I'm glad we're going through it. I mean, I think that it's been something that, you know, we as a council have supported. I think it's something that we are very glad that we have staff dedicated enough to push something like that through and do that kind of heavy lift to be able to look at our, our compensation more closely. Because I do think it's important, you know, I, I talk frequently about building a strong foundation. We just talked about some of the things that are under our feet and the strong foundation that is required for that. But I, and we, we talk a lot about roads, we talk a lot about public safety. Ms. Wethel just mentioned that in earlier comments tonight. And I think that part of a strong foundation for any community and for our city that, that we are talking about here, that strong foundation needs to be the public servants who serve this community. I think we need to make sure that we're getting top-quality people and, and trying to keep those top-quality people there and doing the best job that they possibly can. So I'm, I'm very thankful and thank you, Mr. Resnick, for mentioning this. But I'm very, very thankful to the Teamsters Local for their work on this, very thankful to Shelley Stickford and her team in human resources. It's a long process, but it's one that I think we work very hard to, to do fairly and as openly as possible. So I'm glad to see that we've come to a conclusion here and come to an agreement. I'm looking forward to voting for it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Jones?
Just to add another comment, the, the several collective bargaining agreements, one of the city's goals has been to get them to work similarly, especially in pay steps, so that it works better with our payroll system, so that everybody knows where they're at and where they're going. And that's been a big collaborative effort. It's taken a ton of work in our HR department. It's also taken a ton of work within the collective bargaining units themselves to educate their members and what the, what the goal is and why it's important. And that's, that's resulted in some of these changes that appear pretty global, but they're, they're really standardizing the process and trying to, trying to help us all make it work better and make it more understandable. And entry to our employees, well, the, the, the goal of, you know, bus drivers aren't easy to find. They, they come with some additional requirements. They have to, every annually or every other year, they have to prove that they're medically fit to keep buses out of living rooms and bedrooms and things like that. It requires a commercial driver's license with some, several endorsements, all of which you can lose with a not-work-related traffic violation. So these are professionals that we want to come, have come in the door and work for us. We'd like them to stay a while. We'd like them to get to know the folks that are on the bus and we'd like them to do exactly what they're doing every day. Because that's what we hear from, from the transit customers, is how well-treated they are by their, by the drivers, how welcome they feel on the bus, how safe they feel on the bus. And this is an important element of, of keeping that there. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay. Well, thanks again to everybody involved in getting this to the table here. Motion here is to receive and file and ratify this agreement. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number three is Caldwell-designed structures at Eagle Point Park Historic Structure Report, receive and file.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones?
I move to receive and file the report.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Cory, please.
Parks and Recreation Director Marie Ware and Planning Services Director Wally Werneman are submitting the Historic Structures Report completed by Wiss, Janie Elsner Associates, Inc., for the Alfred Caldwell-designed buildings at Eagle Point Park. Eagle Point Park is a National Register Historic District and a Dubuque Landmark Site. The site has a mixture of buildings that contribute to its history, which are in different stages of repair. To plan and utilize city funding wisely, the Historic Structures Report was needed to assess and prioritize work to be accomplished on each of the historic structures, the Indian Room, Veranda Rooms, and Bridge Complex. Eagle Point Park is an important cultural landscape. The previously budgeted city funding was not enough to move forward with all the work involved in a Historic Structures Report for these three buildings. A team from the Parks and Recreation and the Planning Department pursued a grant with city council approval from the Jeffreys Family Foundation. The Heartland Fund Grant from the Jeffreys Family Foundation was for $75,000 and was matched with $50,000 of city funding for the three Caldwell-designed buildings. The Jeffreys Heartland Fund Grant was approved for a Historic Structures Report for Eagle Point Park. The Historic Structure Report compiled the history and historical context of Eagle Point Park structures, documents the structures in their current condition, evaluates their significance and integrity, and identifies appropriate treatments for the three Caldwell-designed structures. The Historic Structure Report provides the details the city needs to preserve the structures and cultural heritage of Eagle Point Park. The buildings are listed in the National Register of Historic Places as part of the Eagle Point Park Historic District with significance under criteria A and C. The buildings are significant under criteria A as part of a broad pattern of development constituted by the Civil Works Administration, a New Deal program during the Great Depression, and its successor, the Works Progress Administration in the 1930s. The buildings are also significant under criterion C as distinct examples of prairie-style design implemented by Alfred Caldwell in his role as park superintendent and as a part of his City in a Garden design concept. Included with the work is an order of magnitude costs that provides the needed cost estimates. Eagle Point Park is dearly loved by our community. This completed Historic Structure Report provides the necessary information to pursue a challenge grant for bricks and mortar improvements in the future from the Jeffreys Family Foundation. Their Capital Campaign Challenge Grant Program provides additional funds for restoration of the structures, up to $1 million matching funds for bricks and mortar at a two-to-one, two-local-to-one-foundation match. The HSR is being presented to the Jeffreys Family Foundation as our completed project for the Heartland Fund Grant the city received. It is due to them on April 18th, 2025. The foundation will then determine if it wishes to ask the city to submit a proposal for the Capital Campaign Challenge Grant. In January of this year, city staff held a meeting with the representative of the foundation regarding this possibility. They indicated strong interest in this restoration project. At the time, the Jeffreys Family Foundation indicated that the required local dollars could not include city funding as a match. Staff asked additional questions related to this, and the foundation staff was going to get back to us regarding those questions. The foundation outlined that they would notify us in April if a project could be submitted for the Capital Campaign Challenge Grant. If invited, we would then have until August 15th to plan the project and the capital campaign. They indicated that we could break the project into phases, thus making smaller campaigns for specific items or do it as one whole project. They asked that the first project have a significant impact. It was the original stated intent of the city after the Historic Structure Report to work with Heritage Works, whom would lead the fundraising, since the city would need a partner in this matching fundraising effort. In the past decade, Heritage Works researched Eagle Point Park and hosted community tours and educational sessions. They have relationships nationwide with experts, historians, and architects familiar with the park, its Midwest aesthetic landscape style, and Caldwell. Heritage Works has a history of a leadership role between Jeffreys and the boards for Steeple Square and the Mathiast Ham House. The city had conservations with Doug Dwayne Hagerty, who had agreed to a contract for the fundraising of any such project the city might pursue. With Dwayne's passing, we will be discussing this with the Heritage Works Board and potentially looking at other options to consider for addressing capital campaign and improvements needed to the buildings as outlined in the Historic Structures Report. At a recent city council budget meeting, a group of residents came to express their passion for Eagle Point Park. Possibly there is an opportunity that might come from those that gave input. The Prairie School Legacy in Iowa Symposium will be held June 27th and 28th, 2025 in Dubuque. While working on the Historic Structures Report for Eagle Point Park, we realized that there is a broader story that needs to be told about the impact Iowa had on the Prairie School movement, said Julia Bachrock, one of the symposium speakers and researcher for the Historic Structure Report. We have an, we have unearthed new research about Alfred Caldwell. The Symposium includes presentations from leading experts and guided tours of significant historic sites designed by Prairie School luminaries Frank Lloyd Wright and Alfred Caldwell, including Eagle Point Park and the Lowell and Agnes Walter Estate at Cedar Rock State Park near Quasqueton, Iowa. We wish to thank the Jeffreys Family Foundation for the grant that provided the matching funding for the Historic Structure Report that has provided a wealth of information that will assist in our continued work to preserve treasures within Eagle Point Park. We will continue to develop our partnership with them as well as build a greater partnership within the local community to fund the improvements outlined in the report. Opinion of probable costs. Wiss, Janie Elsner Associates, Inc., prepared as part of the Historic Structures Report an opinion of probable costs related to the work needed on Indian Room, Veranda Rooms, and Bridge Complex. High priority repairs and assessments identified that should be addressed within the next few years were the following. Assessment and monitoring of potential displacement at restraining walls, $10,000. Investigate water leakage at the Veranda Rooms, $17,500. Structural assessment of existing conditions at Veranda Rooms and Bridge Complex, $17,500. Structural repairs to roof framing at Veranda Rooms, including repairs to sheet metal roof flashing to address water infiltration. Interior plaster repair, wood shoring and wood framing repairs to joints and beams, $40,000. And structural repairs to wood framing at East Annex of the Bridge Complex. Repairs to include shoring, reinforcing of wood posts, beams, and joints at individual framing bays for $15,000. The opinion of probable cost is summarized by each building. This is based on projected 2025 labor and material costs. At a cost of $189,266 for the Indian Room, $414,632.68 for the Veranda Rooms, $441,798.28 for the Bridge Complex, and $318,053.12 for the site, for a total of $1,363,486.74. The first three bullets noted above are assessments and investigations, which total $45,000, which are included in the total above. These will be completed to update the above probable costs with accurate repair probable costs, as that might add to the total shown above. This would create the truest cost of preservation efforts for the three buildings. I concur with the recommendation to receive and file and adopt the resolution for the Historic Structures Report completed by Wiss, Janie Elsner Associates, Inc., for the Alfred Caldwell-designed buildings at Eagle Point Park and to pursue completion of the projects.
Thank you, Cory. Did I have a momentary lapse? Did you say adopt the resolution or?
Apparently not.
Okay.
Let's add that to the motion.
All right. Thank you. So we now have a motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Sorry, I lost my, Mr. Sprank, you were the second. You good with that? Okay. We've got a motion and a second there to do that, both of those things. Any discussion? Mr. Sprank?
Progress. I'm happy. We knew that the, the structures were in poor shape. I'm glad that we have numbers now to prove it. So I'm glad that something is moving forward on the park in general.
Thank you.
That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farber?
I just want to give a shout out and a kudos to that firm because that report was outstanding. I just want to give a shout out and a kudos to that firm because that report was outstanding, and I recommend everybody get a digital or a hard copy and put it in their resource file because it is an enormous description. It's an incredible description of the history of Dubuque. And not only that, the history of Caldwell and just the history of how these things were designed, paralleling Frank Lloyd Wright, which is native to our part of the United States of America. So it is just a great read, and kudos. And I also look forward to the overhaul improvement, if you will, of Eagle Point Park as we move forward. So, thank you.
Ms. Resnick?
Thank you. I want to agree with Ms. Farber about how this really tees us up to really put some energy into this fantastic jewel we have, the Eagle Point Park. And there's lots of historic reasons and aesthetic reasons and just a lot of fun reasons to go to that park, and it's going to be great. Once we get this planned and get the energy and behind it, I think there are some really good times ahead for this park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Ms. Wethel.
At least she didn't have to read 367 pages of the report. But those 367 pages are amazing. And I remember hearing about the process of this when I was early into council, and I'm actually a pretty big fan of Frank Lloyd Wright architecture and a passion of his, which he actually, Caldwell, said, "No, thanks, Mr. Wright. I don't really want to come study with you at Taliesin," which is hard to quite understand. But Frank Lloyd Wright's idea of structure was that of creating structure of our environment. And Caldwell being very much into the idea of landscaping to your environment, into your livable spaces, it's just an inspiring report to read, but also talks about why these structures degrade and that they are not truly meant to live forever. They are meant to look as though they belong in their environment, and then we need to replace the materials that those buildings were built of with something true to the nature of the design. But it's not meant to be a cement block, thank goodness. But that means we need to keep it up. So I am truly inspired by this report. I mean, I would have listened to all 367 pages if you would have read it, Corey, but I'm very grateful for the work done here and excited for the next steps.
Yeah, Ms. Russell?
Thank you. I think it's important to also mention that Eagle Point Park is important not only to the people that live here now, but the people that maybe grew up here and still monitor Dubuque. I remember during COVID, Heritage Works did some online walks through Eagle Point Park, and they talked about some of the historic features and things that maybe you didn't get to see when you just go there and have a picnic. And friends that used to live here contacted me afterward and said, "I watched that. It was fantastic. I love Eagle Point Park." So when we're thinking about fundraising and moving this important work forward, it's not just the people that you see here that want to support this, but a much, much broader audience that really cares about Eagle Point Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Oh, Wally, please, yeah.
I just want to say, a lot of this work goes to Chris Heppelson, Steve Faisal, and Jared Charlin. So Marie in my name shows up on the memos, but they're really the people that are doing the work behind this. And if you knew the amount of work that they put into this project and the passion that they have for these buildings, it's very monumental. So kudos don't go to all of them. Thank you.
I'm glad you added that, Wally. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farber.
And also, could I give kudos to Heritage Works for all that we're doing behind the scenes? I actually am part of the Heritage Works Board, and I know as we're speaking that we are working on the conference that's forthcoming that was mentioned, and also that we are really looking at how we can continue our consulting and the tentacles that we have out to some other industry experts within the Midwest region. So we are just excited to move forward and support the development of the park again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, motion here is to receive and file and adopt this resolution. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number four is Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission Recommendation for Naming Rustic Point Subdivision Park.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Russell?
I move to receive and file and approve.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Russell, second by Farber. Corey, please.
At the April 7th, 2025, meeting, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission unanimously agreed to recommend naming Rustic Point Subdivision Park Rustic Point Park.
Thank you, Corey. Any discussion? As always, appreciate the work of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and approve that. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number five is submission of fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, annual comprehensive financial report.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Jones? Would receive and file and see the presentation.
Second.
motion by Jones, second by Resnick, and I want to just begin by saying thank you for your patience this evening. Meeting went on a little bit long, so we understand that, but we appreciate just being here. We know that Jenny just loves to be here because she's here all the time with budget hearings, so... Pretty sure she has a cot somewhere in the building, just...
Hold on. Oh, good. Okay. So Jennifer Larson, Chief Financial Officer. Finance Manager Brian Demoss will actually be doing the presentation, and then partly through the presentation, our auditors will make an introduction.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Jenny introduced, I'm Brian Demoss, the finance manager, and I'm here to discuss the fiscal year 24 audit and annual comprehensive financial report. The 2024 annual comprehensive report was completed in April, and there's many benefits to having this report completed. First, it provides the audit is performed annually, and this is required by municipal oversight law governing auditing standards, and it's an examination of city financial records. It's conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards by auditor, and the report is rendered by an independent auditor of how appropriate the financial statements depicts its financial condition and its results of operation. The auditors are independent from the city, which means they are not affiliated with the city in order to ensure complete objectivity and professionalism. So there's several benefits of a financial audit, and they include the audit provides a professional opinion on the financial condition of the government unit. It provides reliable financial information to evaluate the financial health and stability of the government. It strengthens and improves the management's... They provide recommendations to strengthen management and efficiency of the governmental unit, and finally, it ensures the government is in compliance with all applicable legal Within that, there's the compliance audit, and the auditors perform compliance audits, which auditor reviews operations in terms of laws, compliance of various laws and regulations, and these also are beneficial to the city. In 2024, the city selected a new auditor, and that began in September with a request for proposals for audit services. We, the city council, selected Malden and Jenkins in October. We signed an engagement letter on November 20th and 24th, and that report has been, the audit report, has been issued as of April 4th, 2025. David Irwin is on the call, and he's here virtually and would like to introduce himself and Malden and Jenkins. David?
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I hope you all are doing well. Again, my name's David Irwin, and I with Malden Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the city's financial statements. You know, as Brian mentioned, this was our first year auditing the city, and I just want to take the time to thank Brian, Jenny, and their entire finance department for a smooth and seamless audit transition. Everyone was very accommodating, our audit team. They worked hard to address all of our questions and get us everything that we needed in order to get the audit finalized. So we certainly enjoyed working with them. We appreciate the opportunity to be of service to the city, and we look forward to working with you all on the 2025 audit.
Thank you, David, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. When you look at the annual comprehensive financial report, there's several key areas when we look at it. The report's over 200 pages long, but it can be broken down into three main sections: the introduction, which includes the transmittal, the org chart, and the GFOA award, which we received again in 2023; the financial section, which includes the auditor's report; the management discussion and analysis; the government-wide financial statements; the fund financial statements; notes; required supplementary information; and the combining fund statements. And lastly, it includes a compliance section, which includes the internal and compliance opinions, the schedule of federal awards or federal expenditures, and the statutory report. Like to point out in this section, since the report is very long, if you wanted to do an overview of the report, I would recommend reading the management discussion and analysis and the notes, which include details of all the main financial information contained in the financial statements. Next, for our audit results, the city received an unmodified opinion, which most of the time is referred to as a clean audit, and this is the highest level assurance auditors can provide over our financial statements. This means that the financial statements are materially accurate and that we had no disagreements with our auditors. For the government-wide summary, the government-wide statements are the statement of net position and the statement of activities. The statement of net position is similar to a balance sheet, and it contains assets and liabilities, and the difference is net assets. Statement of activities includes all of our revenue and expenditures and is equivalent to an income statement in the business world. For the statement of... For both statements, they're divided into governmental activities and business-type activities. The governmental activities increase net position by 1.5 million at the end of the fiscal year. Within that, charges for services in the revenue section decrease by .6 million, and gaming revenue increase by 1.1 million, as well as expenditures increased in fiscal year 2024 by 19.2 million. If we switch over to the business-type activities, net position increased by 13.8 million. Within that, charges for services increased by 2.4 million. A piece of that net position is investment in capital assets, which, a summary of that is, we take all of our net assets, less depreciation, less applicable debt to figure that amount. So if we have all of our capital assets and we reduce it by all the debt that we have associated with those to get to that figure. As you can see in the chart, this has remained consistent over the last few fiscal years, which is what we expect to see. Next, we'll look at the general fund, which is our primary operating fund of the city. The largest part of the revenue here is taxes, and the next piece is charges for services, which includes leases, fuel sales, and ambulance fees. We look at, this is a three-year history of tax revenue. As you can see, property tax is the largest piece, and this increased by 287,000 in fiscal year 2024. Also note that franchise fees decreased by 1.2 million. Next, in the general fund revenue, this is a three-year history of all general fund revenue. Overall, general fund revenue decreased by 3.9 million over 2023, but we also noted a large increase in intergovernmental revenue of 2.6 million. The other areas decreased in 2024. The other side of the income statement would be expenditures for the general fund, and this breaks down the different areas in the general fund. You'll note that public safety is 42% of general fund expenditures, culture and recreation is 19%, and the general government is 12%. This is a three-year comparison of general fund expenditures. You'll notice that public safety increased by 1.9 million in '24, general government increased by 2.8 million, and overall, general fund expenditures increased by $7 million. This is a comparison of general fund balances versus annual expenditures. So at the end of the year, there's a piece of general fund balance that's unassigned fund balance that can be used for any future purpose. And then we also look at our annual expenditures for the next year. This unassigned fund balance covers our expenditures until we reach tax revenue. As a budget guideline, we try to keep it at 20%, and I'm happy to report at the end of 2024, this percentage was 52.33%, well above that 20% number. So when we get to the back of the report is where the compliance section is, and this can result in different audit deficiencies. As you can see in here, there's three different types: a material weakness, which is the highest, and this would be because of a material audit adjustment. The other are decreasing based on materiality and different things that we can do to prevent deficiencies. In 2024, we did not have any findings for financial reporting, and you can see in past years, we did have a couple different ones. As our compliant audit results, there's no findings related to financial reporting. Other findings at the end of the report are related to required statutory reporting, where we did have one finding in note dispersance during the year 2024 exceeded the amount budgeted in the Health and Services, Health and Social Services function, and this was due to additional grant expenditures at the end of the fiscal year. And these are compliance audit results, where we had unmodified opinions and no findings. And lastly, I would like to thank everyone in the finance department that assisted with this report in process for the audit and all other departments that assisted us as well. So, thank you.
Well, Brian, thank you very much for the report. Discussion? Yeah, Ms. Resnick?
Thank you. Could you tell me, is this a public report, and where can the public find this report?
Yes, it is a public report, and it will be released on the city's website in the coming days after council approval.
Do you know where it will be on the website?
It's in the finance department section under annual reports.
And how many years do you have there? Just a couple years, five years? Several?
Several. It goes back a long ways. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I know I've looked at at least...
Citizens can look this over in more detail. Thank you for the high-level results. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Ms. Farber?
Just a big thank you for the clean audit. That's really awesome, especially on a new auditor. And I really appreciate the way you did your debits and credits in your explanation for us, so it's very simple to understand, and the pie charts are great so that we can understand how the dollars are received and then how the dollars are expensed. And so I think the taxpayers will be very happy with the cheeses, as they say, the cheese rolls, as we call it. So, thank you again, and congratulations. It's a great audit.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The reports on the city's website go back to 1991.
That's just enough. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Were you looking for the 1990 audit?
At least 2007, that's when I was...
Excellent. Well, Brian and Jenny and everybody in the finance department, thank you very much. David, thank you to everyone at Malden Jenkins as well. Thank you for being here tonight. And again, and you mentioned, Brian, thanking everybody who was involved in this, because there are a lot of people who need to answer a lot of questions in an audit process. But for an organization the size of the city of Dubuque, to have a clean audit is a big deal. So thank you very much for the things that you do day in and day out to make sure that we have that result. So thanks a lot for everything, and thanks for being here tonight to share it all with us. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Well, motion here is to receive and file and hear that presentation. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Action item number six is Delivering Dubuque Video, Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Jones?
Would receive and file and view the video.
Second.
A motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. You know, the star of the show is still with us this evening, so Marie is here, and I'm glad you stuck around for a few minutes, Marie, so we can go ahead and roll this video.
Parks and Recreation provides space for play, connection, and community that enhance the quality of life for residents and visitors alike. In this episode of Delivering Dubuque, see how the Parks and Recreation Department turns community feed...
community feedback into action and how you can help shape what's next. So I'm joined today by our Parks and Recreation Director, Marie Ware. Marie, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you here. I got to ask first, where are we? This is a really cool place.
We are in the greenhouse for our Parks Division, and it's located just below Eagle Point Park. This is where we grow many of the flowers that you see throughout our community.
Yeah, this is really cool, and it seems like it goes on forever, and everything's just starting. So it's almost like you can see summer right here in this place.
That's right. You can see this is the beginning. This is the exciting time for us because this is our time to be able to really ramp up and and think about all the great things that are going to happen this summer.
Yeah, that's fun. That's fun to have that kind of a rhythm in the job, I'm sure. One of the things that I have been fascinated by as a city council member and now as mayor is just the the sheer amount that Parks and Recreation is involved in throughout the city. So I'd like to have some conversation about that, and and maybe we can start with the parks part of it.
So we have over 1,200 acres of park areas, and there's over 50, that's five-zero parks. And that's a lot, but historically within our community, it was that we established these very small community parks all across our town. And so we have a very strong system of neighborhood parks, but then we also have these beautiful parks that are the main ones, Flora, Murphy, Eagle Point, the ones that are very beloved and that are the gathering spaces for many.
Well, let's roll into the recreation side of this. This is a big part of what we do is the recreation programming, and I know we can't explain all of it here in this moment, but what is the scope of all the recreation that we do here?
Right, so we have a really robust recreation program. Some of the things have been around a long time. So the playground program that happens in the summer, we have the swimming pools, we have the marina, we have just activity after activity, our programs for sports, and we have sports for kids, but they're introductory. We also have those adult sports, adult basketball, adult volleyball, adult softball.
I didn't hear you say pickleball, but that's the new one. I mean, that's the, that's the big, really popular one right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. And we are, you know, we are trying to keep up with that trend. There's always something new that you're thinking about from a recreational activity, and a lot of times that's things that bubble up from the community. It's where somebody comes to you and says, we really need a, and you fill in the blank. We create places where people create memories.
There is another piece to Parks and Recreation, though, and it's the facilities part of that, and that's a pretty big aspect of what your department is. So if you talk a little bit about that.
These are more gathering spaces as well for our community and have a lot of purpose. So we have the Grand River Center, which is our conference and convention center, Five Flags Civic Centers, we have Iman Arena, and now we have also the E.B. Lyons Nature Center, where we have this partnership where we're working between the three governmental entities and the Friends of the Mines of Spain. So it's very diverse what we do within those facilities. A lot of people don't know, the city owns those buildings, so we maintain them, and then we have those management companies or groups that we're working with that are taking care of each of those facilities on that day-to-day basis.
Parks, recreation, all the facilities you mentioned, that's a lot of work. How do we get it all done? I mean, let's talk a little bit about the people who work with Parks and Recreation.
We have an amazing staff within Parks and Recreation. So we have a highly trained staff that are full-time individuals, but then we have part-time staff that just work for us part-time. We have temporaries. They're the ones that everybody knows. It takes all the gamut of people learning to people who are experts in their field that work for us, and and all of those make for the Parks and Recreation Department, and we couldn't do what we do without every single one of them showing up giving 100% each day.
Yeah. Really, this is a community-driven department, so the feedback that we get from members of the public and the people who use the Parks and Recreation all the time is really one of the most important things that we have to work with, isn't it?
The parks and the areas that we have, they belong to the community. We're just the caretakers of those. And so what's really important is as we consider what we do to move forward in the future in those different facilities, whether it's brand-new or whether it's a renovation, is to be able to involve the community, like what do you want in your park? What do you want in this neighborhood area? And we have some great examples of how the community has really engaged within that, and then it's our role as staff members to be able to listen to that feedback that they give us, make sure that we're true to what people are asking for. When we did the Comiskey renovation, we really, really dug in with the community that lives in that neighborhood, as well as the overall community, had lots of different ways that we gathered feedback from people. So when you see that park out there today, it is a culmination of all the engagement that we had, and that's why people enjoy it so much. They felt like they were heard. And, you know, the other side of it is, is that there are times when people are like, nope, you're not on the mark of what we're saying. And and we have a prime example, one of the neighborhood parks that actually is in construction right now. We thought we heard, they wanted something really natural, and they wanted some different elements, and and so we came out with a concept, and they came back and said, nope, that's not what we were saying. And so we went back to the drawing board and came up with a new design. Sometimes we can't meet one-to-one of what one person wants because it is a community resource, but when we hear it loud and clear from a group, we we listen.
That is such a great story, and it's such a great example of what is best about city government, that we are so close to all of us who live here together. I mean, we are, we are neighbors just like everybody else, and we work here trying to be caretakers of something that belongs to our community and that will belong to our community for decades to come. There's something coming up that is a part of this, and it's it's how we do it well when it comes to Parks and Recreation, sometimes taking a big step back and then looking at it from that higher, as they always say, 30,000-foot view. And we're about to do that with a comprehensive master plan and a review, so talk a little bit more about what's ahead.
This is one of the most important plannings that, in my mind, for Parks and Recreation that we can do. And what we do is we look at our Parks and Recreation systems and our programs and the activities and all the different components. It's the opportunity to have another set of eyes come in for us. So with the consultants, they'll come in, they're going to go to every single park, and they're going to evaluate everything about that park. What about the playground? And what about how it's maintained? And what about usability of it? And all those other kinds of things, they're going to look at that for us, but they're also going to engage our our staff because they're the ones that are either out there maintaining it or because of the recreational programs are using it recreationally. They're also here to be able to benchmark us against other places and say, hey, you know, you may be lagging behind here, or this is a trend you may want to consider. There's many different components. There's a natural component to it, where are there a lot of invasives? Is there better management practices that we could use? As we talked about, the big thing we want to do is engage the public into this. The opportunities that they're going to have to be able to participate in this are many and varied in the next number of months. For people wanting to get involved in that process, and when I'm talking about people, I'm talking all ages, from little ones to all those that have much experience in life. So we want to be able to engage them in so many ways. So there'll be surveys coming out, there'll be events in parks, there'll be some booths where it's hands-on, like what would you like to see? And there'll be elements of things that they can either build or show or talk about because everybody is different. Some people like to be able to write it on a piece of paper, other people like to show it more artistically about what they think. We really are having kind of a big gamut.
That's just such a great description of of why we do what you're describing. It's all of ours.
That's right.
And a lot of us have great ideas that to share, to be able to shape the place where we live and and love to play in this way. So that's fantastic. Well, Marie, I can't walk away from this discussion without talking about you for a moment because you are nearing retirement. You've announced this, you've you've given so many years to this, and I just, I was hoping we could take a moment to reflect on what you're most proud of as you're, you know, walking into the next chapter here.
My role is to be a facilitator, but in the end, my role is to help create the legacies that people enjoy. I have the best job in the world. I get to work with a team of people, a great team of people, not only in my department but within the city. And then that team goes out, just like what we were talking about, of partners that we work with, but also all the different residents that we get to engage with, and be able to shape the future, listen to people, be able to respond, being able to make Dubuque a better place to live, have more opportunities here within our community. And there's nothing better than being able to do that. You leave these legacies behind. So when I drive by those areas, that's what you think of, and you hear the laughing and you hear the excitement as you're in any of these places. And my job most of the days is in meetings and and grinding out a lot of stuff, but it's the result of what all that is that you see that really makes it a great career, a really great career.
Yeah. Well, Marie, thank you very much for your many years of service and for all that you've done, and thanks for being here today to talk about this. This was fun.
Thanks for having me.
Well, Marie, thanks for taking the time to do that, showing us everything about Parks and Recreation. You know, it's interesting, we've had a lot of Parks and Recreation discussions here in this room lately, and there's a lot of talk about things, but then we also get the opportunity, you know, thanks to Felicia and Eric, Felicia Connor and Eric Mulder, to be able to see it in a different way and to anticipate summer, which is really fun because all those, almost all those pictures were very summery. So thank you very much for for taking the time to talk to us about all that. Okay, motion here is to receive and file, watch the video. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Next, our council member reports.
Ms. Russell.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you to Main Street Iowa for the scholarship I received to attend Main Street America Conference in Philadelphia with economic developer Jill Connors in early April. There were over 2,200 people there from across the country, and we had lots of great information to bring back and share with the city and also with Dubuque Main Street, where I serve as the city council rep on that board. I'd also like to thank the Dubuque Trees Forever volunteers, who came up to help with the city's branching out Dubuque tree distribution last Saturday. There were many happy residents receiving one or more trees on Saturday, and some of them were picked up by the residents themselves, and some were planted by our volunteers, but all of them had a great time meeting people, and they were all happy to have a new tree at their home.
Thanks, Ms. Russell. Mr. Jones, I see your hand.
You did, yeah.
Yeah.
Go for it. Well, we've all been to a few budget hearings since our last council meeting two weeks ago. Got to a ribbon cutting for our new professional arena football team, the Iowa Power, that's going to be at Five Flags, I think this spring, but I'm not, I'm not sure when they play. But that was pretty exciting, a lot of people there, a lot of energy there, and another whole direction of new recreational opportunities for people to to come as at least spectators and sponsors and and fair amount of new activity at Five Flags, which is exciting. Traveled Dubuque Met on the 15th, Solid Waste Agency met on the 16th, and I understand equipment is being staged to get that customer convenience center built. It's it's actually happening. Interesting ribbon cutting on the 10th at Wildflower Children's Dentistry. Folks are specializing in children's dentistry throughout Stoneman Road. If you follow dentistry at all, we have cavity-free generations of kids growing up now because of, I mean, there were no children's dentists when I was a kid, that's why the adult dentists that work on my mouth are keeping pretty busy, because we didn't have the opportunity to to have good dental health as children like kids do now today. But interestingly, they have a pediatric anesthesia person who comes in periodically so that they can do unconscious dentistry, I presume, and the very unruly kids that that aren't good at sitting back and saying ah and open their mouth. Interesting group of folks, first practice this gal is owned, and I was proud to be a part of that ribbon cutting. Got an event coming up Friday, the 2nd of May, out of the Emergency Responder Training Facility. It's our annual recognition dinner and fundraising dinner. Dennis Green is retired fire chief from this, from Cascade Volunteer Fire. He'll be going into the Firefighters Hall of Flame. Triple Crown winner this year, our own Vicki Leonard, who was a lead dispatcher for a long time, is going to the Hall of Flame, the EMS Stars of Life, and the Law Enforcement Badge of Honor Group. So that that's pretty neat. And the EMS Star of Life, besides Vicki, is posthumously sadly, my friend Dan Brown, and an old friend, Dr. John Chapman, who was kind of the founding medical director for Dubuque Fire back in 1974. He stepped up and at risk of his license, said, I'm going to authorize these guys to go out and do some things. This is before the Advanced Care Act came along in 1980 that authorized Iowa to certify licensed paramedics and advanced DMTs, but we were out defibrillating people and making life-changing differences then, so we're finally going to honor Dr. Chapman at that event. So it's a fun event, it's a good meal, and it provides most of the operational funding for that fantastic shared facility. And once again, 99 counties in Iowa, I don't think there's, I don't think the other 98 could have pulled it off. People just don't get along and interact like they do in Dubuque County with police and fire and sheriffs and volunteer departments and paid departments and all the other entities that operate out of that building. It's it's pretty fantastic, and it's a great night if you can come out and join us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Farber?
Sure, just wanted to give two shout-outs, one to the Fighting Saints, who are still in the playoffs, and also this week is J-DEF, the Julaine Dubuque Film Festival, and it starts today. There's activities going on, so I just wanted to give Susan Gorrell and that team a shout-out. And then I also wanted to give a shout-out to Chris Coleman, who helped me last Thursday do a presentation on our new upcoming data center to the National League of Cities, and we had two committees join us, one on sustainability and the other for the technology. And so we talked about how different Dubuque was to have a smaller, flexible data center compared to the hyperscale kinds of data centers that companies like Microsoft and Amazon would have, and that's where the environmental concerns are, more so than our small data centers. So we had a very robust conversation, and it was just a good, good questions, and it was just really nice to represent Dubuque as a very innovative, creative data center, and that at our second phase, we will co-host other people's servers, so we will have another enterprise fund that we can make revenues for the city from. So again, just thanks to Chris, because she was instrumental in getting me the research, and then we we both presented, so it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Any others? Yeah? All right, quick list, In Vision 2030, I know I saw Ms. Wethel there too, last week, it was really, that was, that's a great process. I'm really looking forward to the big ideas that the Dubuque community is going to have. Great Easter egg hunt on Saturday at Comiskey Park, a lot of kids having a lot of fun. And Antonio Muzon, our Community Impact Director, had me shouting out numbers for raffles, so that was fun, too. J-DEF coming up, going to be a lot of great things going on there, that's for sure. The, I I do want to say that I'm attending a lot of legislative meetings. The legislature technically goes through the 2nd of May, but it sounds like it's going to be extending at this point, so really tracking property tax legislation and other things that are going to be impacting the city, so working with our our Metro Coalition as well as the Iowa League of Cities on that. And Go Fighting Saints, game Saturday was so much fun. That was one of the best hockey games I've ever seen. It was so much fun, but I'm really looking forward to their their trip to Madison here, so hopefully they can do well. All right, we have a closed session tonight, so I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Jones?
City Council going to close session in accordance with Chapter 21.5 of the Court of Iowa to discuss purchase or sale of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
Yeah, a motion by Jones, second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney of the city council we'll consult with on the issues to be discussed in closed session is attorney, City Attorney Connor Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Resnick?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Farber?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero, we are on closed session.